Begin broadcast.
You went in and out. I'm not certain whether that was to go ahead, Mr. Snell.
Yes, you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Penal City Council. It is October 19th, 2021, and I am calling to order the meeting. Can you please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of the U.S. military troops? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Aloni people, who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloni elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aloni land, the land that Penal sits upon their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloni community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Martinez-Rubin.
Here.
Mayor Rotem Salini.
Here.
Councilmember Tave. Looks like I see his video.
Yeah, ma'am. Sorry, I didn't get to the new button.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Toms. There. City Manager Murray.
Here.
City Attorney Kasher.
Here.
Assistant City Manager De La Rosa.
Here.
Mayor and council, the agenda was posted on Thursday, October 14th, at 4:00 p.m. with all legally required notices. The agenda was subsequently amended to add presentation titles for items 7B1 and 7B2, and to remove one closed-session item. Written comments were received on agenda items and were posted to the Agenda page of the city's website, as well as distributed to City Council in advance of the meeting. Does the council have any conflicts to report on our agenda items this evening? Seeing none, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will not be convening to a closed session. There is no scheduled closed session this evening. Next item on the agenda is the portion for public comments, and it's an opportunity for residents to, and any other member of the public, to comment on items not on the agenda. You see on your screen the Zoom webinar ID number 893-3500-0272, or joining us by phone 669-900-16833. When I open the comment period for the item you wish to speak on, this will be afterward. But as well for public comments, please use the raise-hand feature. If you are joining us via Zoom, if by phone, press *9 to alert staff that you'd like to comment, and then press *6 to unmute once your call done. Members of the public will have about three minutes for public comment. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments? Ms. Stone.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There are a few public comments. We'll start with Cordell Hindler. Mr. Hindler? Mr. Hindler, are you able to unmute yourself? Mr. Hindler?
This is City Clerk, but we may want to come back around.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Cheryl Grover?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you. I don't see anything on my screen except a microphone. Okay. It astounds me. Oh, my name is Cheryl Grover, by the way. I'm the president of the Architectural Preservation Foundation of Contra Costa County. It astounds me that sometimes elected officials or government employees can ignore the essence of who we are and how we became that, because it's a story about every one of us. The history of our ancestors and the things that made us all neighbors and communities resides in our DNA. It is the duty of elected officials and planning department employees to preserve that which cannot be replaced. And what better opportunity than for someone to donate a building? Our DNA doesn't come from money or political schemes that go on behind closed doors. Those do ignore that. Those who do ignore that DNA do so at their eventual peril. The sadness is not in losing an elected official at a next election or a government employee. It is the legacies that they clamor to erase. The people who destroy our past are just one in a long line of comers, but our families will never, will be forever affected by these losses and each of these individuals. How would you bring more transparent transparency and justice? Good people do good things. The intentions to preserve this building and provide for community use are promises already made. They were part of the verbal agreement. People of character integrity don't rescind the strings that bind us like promises. The Architectural Preservation Foundation of Contra Costa County urges you to rethink your vote and be part of what makes us great together. Penal is important in our footprint and history, and hopefully you will become among those who share our deep regard and respect for the culture that designed us and the future of whom we can become. Penal should not be the last city to have its own history museum, but doing this will at least bring your legacy into the light instead of the ash pile that follows the destroyed memories, stories, and learning. And thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Debbie.
Good evening. Since the last council meeting, we've had two successful community events that have taken place. The first one that took place was our long-delayed and awaited car show that was put on by Bob Cop. Based upon the public input, the vendors, and the number of show cars, the event was quite a success. The second community event was Dumpster Day. It began at 6:00 and ended at 11:00. I believe there were in excess of 12 dumpsters filled, and cars were lined up from Penal Valley Park past Eller Horse Elementary School. That, too, appears to have been successful. What do these two events have in common? The use of volunteers was almost exclusively made up of senior citizens. And when I say seniors, I mean those volunteers in their 70s and 80s. I will say that at Dumpster Day, the city did provide two public work employees to help, and our new Planning Commissioner Rafael Menas showed up for a while. But beyond that, all volunteers were once again 70-plus years of age. Perhaps the city needs to establish a list of volunteers that can be called upon when needed, because quite frankly, some of this work and the time spent is too taxing on our seniors. I will specifically call upon Councilmember Murphy in working on this because of what he said in April of 2018. Just in case you don't recall, Councilman, you stood before the council and said, "It was time for the old people to step down and let the younger generation take over." Well, that theory should apply to all aspects of volunteering in the city, not just at the council level. I realize that everyone can't be everywhere for every event for the entire time of that event. That is why I suggest that a volunteer list be developed of individuals that include all ages, so that the spirit of volunteering continues throughout the community and doesn't physically impact only the seniors. And before I close, I'd also like to thank Chief Gang for his successful National Night Out, and this coupling with the Halloween theme. Unfortunately, not all the council members were there to support the police department and their efforts. Lastly, Councilwoman Murphy, I'm still waiting for an answer as to why you do not stand for our flag. It is a display of disrespect to the members of our military as well as the community. Thank you for your time.
Next, we'll hear from Rafael Menas.
Greetings, Mayor, council staff, and members of the public. I'd like to begin by noting some positive news. The city of Penal has finally reached over 90% partial vaccination against the COVID-19 virus, has reached 86.7% full vaccination as of today's vaccine dashboard count. In directly related news, our cases over the last 14 days were 15 out of a total positive case count over the entire epidemic of 1,568, which gives us a cases per last 14 days per 100,000 rate of 77.4, which is, I believe, fifth lowest rate in the county of all incorporated areas. I'd also like to thank Bob Cop for putting on the car show, and everybody on the Community Services Commission for taking part in making Dumpster Day happen. It's always a challenge. I wish I could have been there longer, but due to the fact that the special city council meeting on the use of ARPA funds was also being held on that same day, I couldn't attend both events simultaneously, sadly. I would note that in the future, it might be desirable for the council to schedule its special meetings so that they don't conflict with community events, if that's possible. And I believe that's all my comments under says is to be heard for today. Thank you.
And we have Irma Ruport.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, council staff, and public. And I'm concerned, because I read an article by the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors about Measure X, and they have an advisory board to report again at the supervisors' meeting November 2nd. There were five points that were made, and just to make clear, it's just an advisory board, and they're going to come back to report on it November 2nd. I'm very concerned that one of the items, the last one, number five, the fifth goal is welcoming a safe community, and the opening of closed East County fire stations were noted, not West County, but East. My thing is, I think the mayor, council, and all of you need to write a letter to this advisory board. We do have Station 74 closed. Where is the money? We're waiting for it. And all I'm saying is, it bothers me that this East County is always considered, but the West is always forgotten. My next point is, I'd like to send this message to Debbie Long. Ms. Debbie Long, are you turned up, council member? Are you running for office next year? I think you need to get a life again, and maybe let the... I'm a senior. I volunteer when I can, when I'm called. I'm on the list. I wasn't called for the Community Services. My name is on there, so anytime you need me, please call me. And the next issue about the Barea Museum Building, the community was never included. Check out the past. The promises made. Community was excluded. We were not know, we did not know about these promises. Previous councils made it, including Councilmember Debbie Long. You were part of the backdoor deal. So, come on, let's tell the truth. Come out with the truth. We have funds coming out for the city to help the city. This is a pet project. Let it go. Why don't we put it on the ballot and for once and for all, let the community decide what they want? Okay? This is not the time. We are in a pandemic. We're trying to recover on the city funds. And if not, sell the building. Sell it to whomever wants it and get rid of it. The city taxpayers should not be holding the bag on this building. Again, read the history. Read who made those promises. They're all in the board museum. Belinda Espinoza, the former city manager who did it, and the rest of them are out. And Jeff Rubin, Norma Martinez's husband, president, are you serious? Don't you think there's a little conflict in there? So, again, thank you very much, and you have a good evening. Thank you.
And we'll try Cordell Hindler again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry, sorry, but I was having some audio issues. So, good evening again, Mayor Rubin, council members. My name is Cordell Hindler, and I'm a Richmond resident. I have three things to say. So, one, you are fortunately invited to attend a performance of Our Town this Friday and Saturday evening at Contra Costa City Theater at 7:30. Tickets are $35, but if you get the youth rate, it's $15. Proof of vaccination is required. That's one. And then, number two is, if you recall at the January meeting, when management partners came and talked to you all about the strategic plan, one of the things that came across to me was the idea of a class in comp studies. So, because I was thinking about that a long time ago, and I said, now, I know what the city of Penal should be doing. So, I'm requesting that conference studies would be considered to help this city out with this project, because they have worked with other jurisdictions on their class in comp studies, and I'm thinking that that's perfect, too. And then, third is, I have a future agenda request to bring to you all. I was thinking that to have Ken Kirke to come speak to you all about the housing element on homelessness, because when I was at the mayor's conference a couple weeks ago, I find his presentation very helpful, because we want to hear what the other cities are doing, like resolving this matter. So, I'm hoping that in the future, that you would have Ken Kirke to come speak to you all about this. And that's all I have to say. After hearing what the last speaker said, I'm like, I'll just be quiet.
And I'm just combing through. It looks like, Madam Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And Mr. Hindler, thank you for, I appreciate your last comment. Whether you're a resident of Penal or not, I just want to echo that a public comment, of course, is your prerogative as resident or non-resident in Penal. We appreciate, as council members, hearing your interest and your concerns. I would request that you also consider that your comments are a reflection of you, if that reflection, however, however it's presented, it is about you. And the council, of course, is interested in hearing those public comments, along with all kinds of other perspectives that there may be related to any particular issue that you may raise. As your elected officials, again, we welcome public comment, and it's part of our orientation and a duty to our residents to consider everyone's perspective, whether it be made through public comments or otherwise. So, in advance of future public comments, I also would request that the comments that you make be not about others, fellow residents. This is not a conduit for that. In fact, I would encourage you to speak to your neighbors and residents, to the extent possible, and have city business be what is on your mind when it comes to the public comments that you make. Okay, taking us now to the next item on the agenda. We have a couple of recognitions and presentations, and two proclamations that are going to be presented today. And in the spirit of the kind of teamwork that we like to foster here among council, and what has been our practice, council members, please join me in reading the proclamation about Fire Prevention Week, and as well about Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, the first one will be Fire Prevention Week. And the audience will see that we are reading about weeks that have occurred. They are, that have passed us, and that's partly a reflection that we missed a council meeting. We did not meet two weeks ago. Otherwise, these proclamations would have probably made a little bit more sense in terms of timing, but nonetheless, the concepts that they represent are still outlookable. So, here we go. With regard to Fire Prevention Week, whereas the city of Penal is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Penal, and...
Whereas fires are serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, as the majority of U.S. fire death, four out of five, occur at home each year. And whereas residents of Penal should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. And...
Whereas awareness of simple safety practices can help lower our local fire death and injury rates. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires by half. And Penal residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And...
Whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the city of Penal first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And...
Whereas this year's Fire Protection Week campaign, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, works to educate everyone about the different sounds the smoke and carbon monoxide alarms make. Knowing what to do when the alarm sounds will keep you and your family safe. When an alarm makes noise, a beeping sound or a chirping sound, take action.
Therefore, I, Norma Martinez Rubin, Mayor of the city of Penal, County of Contra Costa, State of California, do hereby proclaim the week of October 3 to 9, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all citizens of Penal to be aware of their surroundings. Look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency. Respond when a smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and support the public safety efforts of the city of Penal's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2021. And I'm going to extend that to heed the work on public safety efforts of the city of Penal's Fire and Emergency Services through the rest of the year and ongoing. Fire Chief Winkoo, you have any comments for us?
Yes, thank you. So, thank you, Mayor and council members, for recognizing Fire Prevention Week, which this year happened to fall, as you mentioned, during a week in which we did not have a council meeting, but which, of course, has equal relevance every week of the year. This year's Fire Prevention Week campaign, which is sponsored by the National Fire Protection Association, especially focuses on the different sounds that smoke and carbon monoxide alarms make, and the actions to take when alarms sound. So, tonight, I would just like to briefly familiarize or refamiliarize everyone with four sounds. The first sound is the sound of a smoke alarm. It's a continuous set of three loud beeps, that being smoke or fire. It also means get out of the house, go to your outside meeting place, and call 911. If you forget your cell phone inside the house, use a neighbor's phone, but do not go back inside the house if there's smoke or fire. As was mentioned earlier, install smoke alarms inside each bedroom, outside each sleeping area, and on every level of the home. The second sound is the sound of a carbon monoxide detector, which makes a four beep sound, so three for smoke and four for carbon monoxide. Because carbon monoxide is slightly lighter than air, detectors should be placed on a wall about five feet above the floor. It could also be placed on the ceiling. Do not place the detector right next to or over a fireplace or flame-producing appliance. Each floor needs a separate detector. If you're getting a single carbon monoxide detector for each floor, place it near the sleeping area to make sure it can wake you up. And test both alarms once a month by pushing the test button. The third sound is a single chirp every 30 or 60 seconds on either device, which means the battery is low and must be changed. Best practice is to change the batteries on your alarms when you change the clocks. So, the upcoming week of November 6, November 7, where the time changes there in the middle of the night, is when we change the clocks this year. So, that's coming up in a few weeks. So, that's time to change the batteries in your detectors. Finally, the fourth sound is a chirping that continues after the battery has been replaced, which means that the alarm is at the end of its life and the unit must be replaced. All smoke alarms must be replaced after 10 years, or if they do not sound when tested. Carbon monoxide detectors should be changed every five to seven years. We'll have this information posted on the fire website, and we'll also make it available through the city's other communication channels. And again, thank you, Mayor and council, for recognizing Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you, Fire Chief Winkoo. I have a question for you. It used to be, at one time, that the fire department either provided or assisted with obtaining the smoke detectors. Is that still the case these days?
Unfortunately, not. That used to be in conjunction with a lot of the big-box stores that used to donate a lot of detectors to fire departments, but now, as a lot of things have happened, those have become more expensive, and the big-box stores can't really afford to distribute those for free anymore. So, it's not something that we, there's not a program right now that we have in place, unfortunately.
It's a minor investment for family safety, so those are readily available these days elsewhere. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tave, you've got your hand raised. You have a question for Fire Chief Winkoo?
Yeah, you mentioned daylight savings time. Are we still doing daylight savings time? I think Prop 7 did away with that, right? I'm not sure. I'm trying to remember.
A question that I don't know the answer to, as far as if we're changing the clocks this year. I assume we were.
No, I was just, I heard daylight savings time. I'm not sure if we're still doing that. At least I heard, I heard something about it.
My understanding is that the clocks are going to be changed on November 7. Someone, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Did you guys?
Yeah, no, I don't know the answer to that either. Now, I'm wondering, but I will stay tuned to the news, otherwise I'm going to miss a meeting or not, or...
And in any event, and in any event, let's change our, let's change our...
The smoking detector.
...battery. I'm going to say, go ahead and do that on November 7.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the second proclamation, which is about Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 11. Also, we're again here doing it in retrospect. Whereas in 1934, at the request of New York City's Italian community, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt declared the first national observance of Columbus Day. In 1937, President Roosevelt and the U.S. Congress made October 12 a national holiday. And President Richard Nixon made the official date of the holiday, the second Monday in October as of 1972. And...
Whereas in 1977, participants at the United Nations International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Peoples' Populations in the Americas proposed the Indigenous Peoples' Day, replace Columbus Day. Indigenous Peoples' Day recognizes that native people are the first inhabitants of the Americas, and it urges Americans to rethink history. And...
Whereas state, city, schools, and community groups across the nation are observing Indigenous Peoples' Day to raise awareness of the culture and history of native people, as well as their right to respect, justice, dignity, and equal opportunities. And...
Whereas the city of Penal wishes to join the national movement to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day, recognizing the importance of acknowledging the past while supporting efforts to improve the future. And...
Whereas the city urges public and private schools in Penal to adopt a curriculum that demonstrates a commitment to increasing awareness of the Aloni people, a collective of the surviving natives from many tribes, the traditional inhabitants of this region.
Now, therefore, I, Norma Martinez Rubin, Mayor of the city of Penal, County of Contra Costa, State of California, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 11, 2021, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Penal, and encourage all residents to celebrate and honor the role that Indigenous people have played in our history and development as a community, while recognizing the ongoing struggles of all Indigenous peoples of this land. Thank you, council members. Councilmember Tave, you've got your virtual hand raised. Did you have a comment or question?
Nope, we're all set.
Go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Uh, no, we're all set.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
Madam Mayor, there is a public comment.
Madam Mayor, there is a public comment.
Let's hear it, please.
You will allow it, okay. It's from telephone caller, last four digits, 5748. Caller?
Please, please go ahead, and you wish to make a public comment?
Yes, hello?
Yes, hello. We're ready to listen to your comment related to the proclamation that we just made.
Oh, yes, just to add information to Mr. Tabe, my name's Anthony James as well, longtime Pinole resident, over forty-five years, but on the, the city wouldn't put the public information placard banner that maybe not all of you saw, but it was incomplete, and I don't know who drew up that colored fall banner, but they did not put the directions of fall backwards, spring forward, and/or the number of hours involved. So they need to rewrite that poster that they're putting on the television, public television channel, as I just mentioned, to include the fall backwards, that you actually have to turn the clock backwards, I believe, one or two hours, one hour, I believe. And in the spring, it's spring forward. And none of that information was included, so it might leave people hesitant to know what they're supposed to do if they can't remember. And then, as far as the Indigenous people, I think, well, I also wanted to make a comment with the Fire Department, but it wasn't, I wasn't picked up and unmuted, so I had my hand up. So can I comment on the Fire Department as well?
Yes, please go ahead, continue.
Oh, okay. I know they did a lot of work in and around the city, but they, in relationship to what just happened the other day with major power outage, with fires on several of the Bay Area PG&E circuit breaker boxes on the telephone poles or lines, they, they need to address the one in Pinole Valley Road, right in front of Elehurst Heights, Elehurst Elementary School, there where the large pine trees, over half a dozen of them, are encroaching upon the lines and some of the boxes. They did some trimming, but I know I called them and I think a city council member called or somebody, but PG&E hadn't come out in weeks, if not months, to re-trim the trees there to prevent such an issue with fires burning into the pine trees and then maybe leaping across the street to burn the canyon down over there. And I know the Fire Department was involved with the city and they trimmed like a block of trees and branches along Pinole Valley Road there, but they stopped right near Elehurst School, and I think they should have went further up to the junction where their new proposed firehouse might be someday and go up to Adobe Road, the corner intersection of Adobe, Old Adobe Road, where it meets Pinole Valley Road. So they need to go out and do about another twenty to thirty yards of trimming.
Okay, and we have a three-minute limit, so we heard the gist of your comments, so thank you for that. And Ms. Stone, are there any other public comments specifically related to the proclamations?
Yes, we have Raphael Minnis.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a brief comment related to the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. I'd like to thank the Council for making this proclamation and tying it into the earlier announced land use statement. Let's see. I don't think land use statement is quite the right word. It was land acknowledgement, yes. It's important both to acknowledge routinely as part of the council meetings process, but also important to highlight specifically on particular days that have impact to the community in particular. And I know a lot of the time, the framing around Indigenous Peoples' Day is, says it's somehow taking away from the Italian-American community as, you know, degenerating Columbus or trying to elevate one group over another. But it's not about tearing down historical figures, it's about recognizing the historical importance of the people who are here before us and who are, in fact, still here and the ways in which we're connected in a society. I think it's definitely important that we have, at the very least, the one day to recognize that. And I'd like to conclude by, again, thanking the Council for formally recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I hope that the schools will take up the Council's invitation to also recognize that day as well. Thank you.
And Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment period on this item. And if I may add, Chief Winkup, a bit of your reaction or response if there's a?
Actually?
Do we have one more?
Yes, one just popped up. It is the caller, last four digits, 5748.
Okay, caller, please go ahead.
Hello, this is Anthony, calling on the Indigenous people. And I think specifically speaking in Pinole, we should give the Alonee people, Indians, their due, you know, and we should give them more credit for establishing themselves in California and specifically in and around Pinole. And I think what the City Council and some of the members could do is either schedule it for a future agenda item or an initiative to name the, for example, to name the Adobe Park, the Old Adobe Park Trail as the Alonee, as part of the Alonee Trail out there in Pinole, like several other cities have incorporated the Indian terms throughout the Bay Area Alonee, like Hercules has Alonee Middle School, and I think some other cities have given them more recognition, but I don't really know or have any idea what Pinole has done to give them the stature they deserve, like the, like I'm recommending, the Alonee Trail, which was originally part of, if not all of, the old Pinole Valley Road. So you would be doing two historical things, and we could probably even get historical funds maybe to help clean up that area behind the Dog Park, which is the old Adobe Road slash Pinole Valley Road Trail, to make it someplace as a destination point to go to other than using it as a dumping ground, as the City of Pinole and Public Works Department has done over the last ten, twenty, thirty years, with drain, drain sewage pipes out there and pyramid mounds of garbage and old rubble that the city had decided and allowed their workers to dump out there. And it's all overgrown now and vermin's going in there, but it's still a trail that's used by a lot of people, but it needs to be cleaned up. Not to mention the breach on that trail that happened a few years ago. And the old Chief Coons, I believe it's Mr. Chief, Fire Chief Coons, said that the county and the city was advised and instructed that that trail had to be repaired from the breached landslide on the back half of that trail, but everybody just dropped the ball and didn't take the initiative to follow up on it. So there's a big hole in half of the trail that's blocked off with the last hundred yards of that trail going out behind the Dog Park to Pinole Valley Road. So I challenge you people to get out there and investigate that and try and do justice to both the community, the citizens of Pinole, and the Alonee Indians, using it as maybe a historical site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for all the comments. Ms. Stone, last sweep on, anyone else popping up?
No, no mayor, no more public comments.
Thank you. I will close the public comment period. There were a couple of, a number of statements made, in particular, from the last speaker. I want to turn to Fire Chief Winkup. Perhaps you can give us a little bit of an update or maybe return to us with some, just to be clear, and members of the public are not misinformed about this. And that's that at one time, PG&E was going about clearing trees, overgrowth of trees, so they wouldn't pose a danger when coming into contact with power lines. What do we know about, about that work at this point is one question. And then, that's to you, Fire Chief. And then I have a question for City Manager Murray.
So gladly, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the question from the public. So back in August, PG&E was out in that very area there doing, they did substantial tree trimming work around the power lines there at Eller Horse. And then, as mentioned, we've also done substantial work in a number of areas for fire fuel mitigation throughout Pinole in areas that, quite frankly, had not been addressed for decades. And so we've done, tripled our budget in our fire fuel mitigation and tripled the amount of work that we've done compared to any year before us. And so while all of these areas are areas of concern, we can't take care of decades' worth of work that needs to be done in one swoop. So this is an ongoing project. And so, yes, some very good points are made up and were brought up. And we continue to assess, you know, prioritize of what needs to be done right now. And so, you know, like the caller also did acknowledge, there's been a ton of work done, but it's not over with, that we will be doing more work in subsequent fire seasons to kind of make up for the lost time, if you will. So, yes, we've, all of these areas and issues are on our radar. We've done a tremendous amount of work this year, and that project will continue.
Thank you, Chief Winkup. Now my question to our City Manager, perhaps just a request to make a note of this. There were comments made by the last speaker with regard to landslide on a trail behind the park, the Dog Park, and also that he implied that public works, our city staff allowed that area to be used as a dumping site. I would like us to clarify that and/or rectify it. If there's anything that you can let us know about that, either now or soon after, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I'm not familiar with the stretch of the trail that the member of the public was referencing, so, but I'm happy to have our parks staff go out and look in that area behind the Dog Park, the trail, to see if there's any sign of debris, encampments, erosion of the trail and the like. So happy to have them go out and I'll report back to the City Council what they find.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So I've got two virtual hands up. I'm not certain who was first, might have been Mayor Protem Salimi, if not, please pardon me, but I will have you go first and then followed by Councilmember Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to acknowledge former school district president Stephanie, and then there's Darla who brought to my attention last year the Indigenous Day, and she's the one who brought me and advised me to bring him back to the Council. I would like to thank her.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Councilmember Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor. I was also just wanting to highlight how thankful I am that we passed this proclamation today, and also given the comments from, I believe his name was Mr. James, I thought it was important to highlight and hoping that the city, either the City Manager or the City Attorney can highlight some of the work this Council has done just this year around taking steps to acknowledge the indigenous history of our town. I know we're, we've got a lot of work to do, as Mr. James alluded to, which I agree with, but we're taking baby steps, and I was hoping that either the City Manager or the City Attorney could chime in there on the progress we've made thus far.
City Attorney Casher, would you like to weigh in? I'm happy to offer my reflections.
Yeah, I think there, there are a number of things that we've done. I don't have the list, but you know, one of the main ones that we see, obviously, every meeting now, is the land acknowledgement that was added to the City Council meeting agenda. It was an amendment to our City Council meeting procedures, and that's something that's now read into the record at every single City Council meeting. I know that we've had a number of proclamations honoring and recognizing things like, you know, recognizing all the diversity of our, of our community here and the various, you know, diverse aspects of our community, whether it's kind of Black History Month or some of those things. So that's been great. City Manager Murray, I don't know if you have things you want to add to that?
Yeah, just one other noteworthy, so I think the land acknowledgement, which you mentioned, is a relatively recent addition to our procedures, and I think is a wonderful way to open the meeting. That was adopted in association with what I thought was a really profound presentation at the City Council that was very informative to me and I imagine to the rest of the community regarding the indigenous heritage of Pinole. And so I think the City Council has taken, as Councilmember Murphy stated, some beginning steps, and I expect that we'll be doing more over time, but some really important beginning steps to recognize the contributions and legacy of the Indigenous peoples.
Thanks.
Thank you all. All right, so we will move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is item 7B. We have two presentations tonight. The first is an update on Police Department activities. Do we have Chief Gang ready to go? Thank you, Chief Gang. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much for having me, Madam Mayor, Council, and members of the public. Thanks so much for giving us an opportunity to provide a short update on, you know, police goings and what's been going on. It's been a little while since we've seen everybody. Certainly, I just want to start out by thanking everybody who came out to our National Night Out, another successful year. And again, it would be a success unless we had partnerships with our community. We really do believe that our partnerships with our community is really what makes Working Here special. So thank you, everybody, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So we want to give a short update. If it's okay with you, Mayor, what we'll do is we'll get through this and then we'll take questions at the end, unless you feel there's a different structure you'd like to have.
That sounds perfectly fine.
Okay, great. So next slide, please. So I just want to read the mission statement, so everybody's clear on this mission statement. Now, one thing that's really, really important that I want people to understand is that this mission statement was put together by a committee in the organization. Everybody was invited to take part in this. This was not something that was brought from the top down. It was something that was developed, all of us together. So I'll read it to everybody. And it's short and sweet, but it's impactful for us. And it's the Pinole Police Department is committed to ensuring a safe community by providing exemplary law enforcement services while engaging our citizens with honor, integrity, professional, excuse me, professionalism, and respect. Next slide. So here, I just want to talk about some of the challenges that's facing, you know, our profession and the Pinole Police Department in general. Probably the biggest challenge that we're facing now is recruitment and retention, and we see that around the country. But incidences like I'm showing here, we had an incident several months ago that had to do with a First Amendment auditor, which made news. A lot of people in our community were concerned about the interactions they saw. And then also, of course, the recent situation with a former employee who was arrested and charged with a crime. So, you know, we fully understand that these incidents can erode, you know, the trust of our community, you know, and we worked so hard to build that trust. So we understand what this can do and what the impact is. You know, as your chief, I can tell you, I was extremely disappointed and frustrated, to say the least, but we will continue to move forward, we'll be transparent, and we'll continue to build relationships with our community. You know, the first incident was with a First Amendment auditor, maybe you had saw that and some of that stuff was on the social media and our social media sites. You know, honestly, we didn't perform well, but it gave us a great opportunity to understand growth opportunities, and we learned from that event. Prior to that interaction, we already had scheduled training to deal with social intelligence training, procedural justice training, so the timing was really on point for that. And again, you know, And again, you know, could we have performed better? Yes, absolutely, we could. But we're changing things. We addressed some of the things that occurred in that video. But again, looking back, there was nothing illegal that happened in the video. But again, we want to get better. We want to learn from our mistakes and then continue to grow from those. So the one thing I also want to talk about is the second incident. And I can't get too deep into that incident because the criminal charge and the case is still active. And I want to be respectful to the former employee as he does have a judicial process and he has rights. So I don't want to get involved now. But what I can say is that the agency acted very swiftly when we notified this criminal activity. We immediately placed the employee on administrative leave. And then we contacted the Contra Costa DA's office to conduct a criminal investigation. We understood the seriousness of this and that's why we took swift action. The other step that we took is that we hired a third party to do the administrative investigation. Many times that doesn't happen. Organizations conduct their own internal investigation. What we felt best for transparency is to have an outside organization do that. And if you found, the process was much different for us. We didn't wait for the criminal report, the investigation there completed. We did it simultaneously and they did a parallel investigation. During that investigation, we identified some policy violations, certainly some conduct of does not becoming a Pinole police officer. At which time, the individual was notified of the IA and in return, he resigned from the organization. Now, again, those incidents are hurtful, they're damaging. But I can tell you that nobody is more frustrated about situations like that than the good men and women that are doing the job every day. And we spent so many years building trust in our organization. And knowing that this could erode that is very, very frustrating for myself as well as everybody else. You know, this individual, this gentleman, you know, he started out in our community, excuse me, in our organization as a community service officer. So we started in our organization very young. He went through the required background that post requires, including a psychological background and also a polygraph. He did in-depth background process, you know, and sometimes there's certain things you're just not going to be able to predict that are going to happen. But what I can tell you is afterwards, we sat down as command staff and we did a post-incident debrief on the situation. And we found that our policies are solid. They're in place. We follow the policies. Everything that we could possibly do to prevent an incident like this to occur again is in place. So I'm proud of the way that the organization handled it. I'm proud of the swiftness in which we took action. And again, I know that we have to do some work in the community of rebuilding trust in our community. But it's not anything different than we do every day. Building trust with our community, being transparent and continue to build those relationships. Next slide, please. So here's one of the challenges facing law enforcement profession in general, staffing. Now staffing, recruitment and retention is one of the biggest issues facing American policing. Now you see already hundreds of people in San Francisco have left. Many people are leaving larger organizations. And it's not, to think that it's not going to affect our organization as well. Currently, right now, if you see the numbers, we are allocating numbers of 28 sworn officers and currently we are at 24. Our allocated survey numbers are 20 and currently we are at 16. But we do have a lot of work currently going on when it comes to recruitment and hiring. Our police lateral is scheduled for their medical. So we're looking like we'll be getting a lateral up in the next couple of weeks. We have a police trainee scheduled for their polygraph, which is starting their process. They'll be ready for the academy in January, hopefully. Now we have our two CSOs that are going to be starting with us. And thank the council very much for doing this budget process. We were able to get two full-time CSOs, which were previously part-time. So that's going to enhance our abilities to do some of the quality life issues when officers are busy. So really, really thankful for that and really blessed by the opportunity to have them starting with us. And then we have two dispatchers also in the process. So we're working hard. As a small organization with limited resources, you know, it's very taxing to go through these processes. So the community just understands the challenges that we face in our profession. About 50% of people that actually go through the process are successful to be able to pass the full background and be available to be hired. So it's very, very challenging to get people through their process and then they don't make it through. So again, we're working through those things. What I want to share is that the numbers that you're seeing there are not true numbers. And the reason why is because, you know, we've been challenged with COVID. Our numbers are not reflective of what we really have. So with those numbers of 24 sworn, I have a list here. One sergeant went out early this year on early disability retirement. One sergeant is currently on extended light duty status. Another sergeant is currently on a workman's comp injury. Two officers are on light duty, one long-term for almost two years now. And the other one has been out for a substantial amount of time. We just released somebody from probation for not meeting the minimum standards that we expect in this organization. We had one resignation, which we talked about. And then we had one retirement at the beginning of the year. So again, the numbers say 24, but in, you know, the true numbers as to who's hitting the streets, we're talking about, you know, 17 people right now. So we're still work on recruitment and retention. We changed the way we've done business a little bit. And if you see here on the slide, it's actually a new recruitment opportunity for us. Talk about what we have, modern technology. You know, we want to be public servants. We want to be engaging our community, forward-thinking. We feel that if we put something out there that we're recruiting with, the people will understand when they're applying here, these are the characteristics we're looking for. So I'm hoping people understand that we are changing how we've done recruitment in the past. And it's certainly really laser-focused on bringing in diversity that meets our community. And as we know, most people on Zoom right now will know that Pinole is the sixth most diverse community in the state of California. So we want our numbers to reflect those as well. So we're doing really hard, working hard in getting that diversity in our workforce as well. Next slide. So here's another thing that came up last year in 2020. We talked about the Eight Can't Wait Initiative. So I want to talk a little bit about that because again, another challenge. The first thing I want to start off with, right off the bat, so there's no questions about this. The George Floyd incident was not a training issue. The George Floyd incident was a human heart issue. So that has nothing to do with training. It was, he's a bad person. He should have never been in our profession. But the bottom line is, it's not a training issue. Every one of us that watched that, whether you're in the profession or out of the profession, had tears in our eyes when we watched that. And myself as a police chief, I just couldn't believe what I was watching. I couldn't believe that that was the same person who was wearing the badge and patched live on for over 33 years representing our profession. It really disgusted me, to be honest with you. So Pinole PD has been early adapters of this Eight Can't Wait Initiative. Many of these were in place before the Eight Can't Wait Initiative was even sent out. So we're really proud of that and we'll continue to work on providing new reforms that are out there and meeting what's necessary. Our philosophy is that de-escalation is not something that you learn in the classroom. It's a skill built through practice. I'm very, very proud to tell you that we are first in the nation to partner with an online de-escalation company called Thin Blue Online. I think I mentioned that a couple of years ago. We are piloting their program. Our officers go through de-escalation training every week. So we're not doing it once a year, not annually. They go through this online de-escalation training once a week. So that really gives an officer out there better skill set to be able to deal with some of the challenges that they have. Again, we have proactive in our approaches. And in fact, we actually modern lever, modern lever, excuse me, leverage modern technology to help us with these initiatives and helping us use less, less use of force in our profession. The bottom line is that's what we have to do. Try and reduce the opportunities for us to have to use force and certainly reducing the opportunities when we have to resort to using use of force. In our organization, every single use of force is reviewed by the command staff within 24 hours. Now I'll put a little asterisk there because if it's on a Friday, most likely won't happen till Monday. But everybody, from myself to the command staff, we will review every single use of force, whether there's a complaint or whether there's not a complaint. And then that goes to a use of force review board, which is made up of members of our organization. Command staff members are not on that. We allow the peers to evaluate whether or not it meets or is outside the policy. And then they send a recommendation to the command staff, which has two levels to look at this, to review it and make decisions based upon what we see. I'm proud to say that our organization, in the last two years, I have the numbers here. So 20 and 21 combined, we've had seven internal investigations. One of those came externally. The rest were all internally. Policy violations, maybe not doing a report properly. But there was no use of force complaints in any of those seven that we've had in the last two years. So I'm proud of that. But it takes effort and it takes accountability. And that's what we're here to tell you that we do take this serious. And that we think that the national narrative is something that we're going to help never comes to Pinole. Because we do believe in engaging our community and working with our community and partnering with them. Next slide, please. So when we talk about the technology to help us with those initiatives, I want to talk to the right slide where you see the officer at the computer. That is called Thin Blue Online. What they go through is scenario-based training. And what they do is they have scenarios that come up and they have to engage with the person on the screen. There's a microphone, the computer is interacting with them. And at the end, they get a score to see whether or not they got a passive score or they didn't. And then they get some tips that actually help them to say what you could have done better, how we thought you could have just de-escalated the situation a little bit better. I'll give you a little story that attached to that. The officers use this and within a week or two, when we first got this set, excuse me, this technology, officers went out to an exact same scenario that happened with a man with a knife in our community. The officer able to de-escalate that person, may actually get him help. And to this day, he writes us letters thanking us for the way we handled that situation. Again, I do believe that de-escalation is a skill that needs to be practiced. It's not something you just go through one class and you're done. So we have that here and every officer goes through that. And it's mandated to go through that several times in life. What you have on the left side of your screen is an officer holding out his holster. And then the picture underneath it, there's a device on that called a single side arm. And what that does is automatically, when an officer pulls their taser or their firearm, the cameras within a 30-foot radius, all the body one cameras will be activated. So there's no, you can't turn your camera off. You didn't turn, you didn't have it on and I didn't think about it. That's alleviated now. At this point, somebody takes out their firearm, someone takes out their taser, they're automatically activated. So we're reducing the fact that we're going to have an incident where it's not captured on footage. What you see underneath that is called a ball wrap. The ball wrap is something I explained a couple of months, a couple of years ago to you. It's a device that you can use and you actually shoot out a device, much like a taser. But all it does is send a lasso and it wraps the person's arms up. Why we think this is important? Because many times, officers only have one tool on their belt to deal with mental health issues. A lot of times, those mental health issues turn into really poor interactions. This device will allow us to help control them without having to use force and hopefully save lives in the outcome of that. Next slide, please. So let's talk about crime. Anybody wants to talk about crime stats? And you know what? I have to tell you that we have to be aware that COVID obviously is going to reduce our crimes. So I am not going to sit here and raise our hands and say, yeah, look at the great work that we did. COVID obviously has a reduction in some of the crime. But what you're seeing there is from 2000, 2020, a reduction in major 48% of Part 1 crimes. A lot of it had to do with people being locked up, people weren't out and of course, isolation. So again, we're going to continue to work hard and reduce crime in our city and particularly in Part 1 crimes. And you see the Part 1 crimes are listed on your left-hand side. What you see the asterisk there for the, under the rape is that that was in a cell. They knew each other. It was actually a relationship-type issue. The larcenies, we include. A lot of organizations don't include thefts from vehicles as well. And then of course assaults, could be simple assaults at like a school or something like that. So we're all-inclusive. I've never hidden behind the numbers. I've told the city managers that we will show the numbers, whether they're good or bad. I just, I believe in being transparent and just showing all the numbers. I don't try and manipulate any numbers to show increase or decrease in other areas. Next slide, please. Another thing that's really, really important to evaluate is looking at an organization is response times for police departments. Now this is our average response times for Part 1 calls. Part 1 crimes are the ones we just talked about, the violent crimes. What you see here on the left is rate numbers. And people ask, well, what are those numbers? Is that from the time someone calls? The numbers that were captured here are the numbers from when the dispatcher sends that call to an officer. He responds from whatever location he's at until he gets on scene. Now I have five on the bottom there as an asterisk because what you have there is that's kind of a national benchmark. There's no national studies really to say what is good and what is bad. But usually five minutes is, if you're in five-minute range or below, you're supposed to be in exceptional range or response times. And that's really important. And I'm really proud to say that our officers do get to the calls quickly, safely, and those numbers are reflective of that. So again, proud of that. Next slide, please. So I just want to kind of share some of our goals that we have set. Every year, we sit down as a group and we set some goals for ourselves. As many of you know, in the last several years, everyone, police chief, we've really been stepping on the throttle and changing culture, getting new technology, modernizing the police department and certainly engaging our community. So the number one goal for us has to be getting fully staffed. It's really, really challenging right now to piecemeal officers together. They're working a lot of shifts and even more, working a lot of late hours, which is never really good. So we're going to work hard on getting fully staffed. And again, without having a dedicated recruitment team and a dedicated background team, we have to piecemeal these on top of all our other ancillary duties. So we are getting through it and hopefully we'll be able to reach that goal. The other thing is reduction, reduction of crime. That's always going to be our laser focus. It's funny, I was looking back recently at my swearing-in speech that I gave. And I talked about reduction of crime, being laser-focused and that has to be our number one goal. So we will continue to do that. And we also have to continue, we're going to implement 21st century policing concepts. For those who don't know what that is, 21st century was policing concepts. We came out of a group that came out and says, hey, we're going to call it the six pillars that we think organizations need to focus on. First pillar was building trust and legitimacy and then policy and oversight. And then there was technology and social media, community policing, crime reduction, training and education, and then officer wellness initiatives. So again, we're going to focus on those type of things, implementing concepts that maybe we don't have in place yet. But if you look at those six pillars, that's kind of really been our guiding posts of how we want to bring any improved police services to the community. We want to continue to develop our community outreach opportunities. As many know, our organization, well beyond many other organizations in the area when it comes to community outreach opportunities, not just in the quantitative, but the qualitative nature of what we bring forward. We'll continue to find new ways to engage. Again, in 2019, we had one strategy to be engaged with our community. We had something called COVID that hit that completely changed how we were going to focus, how we're going to change community engagement. We were doing things online and things like that. So we have to be innovative. We have to be progressive as we bring these strategies forward to our community. And then we want to be innovative, right? We want to continue to seek out emerging technology to enhance our abilities to deliver police service to our community. That's something we've done. We talked about being the first in the nation several times in some of the initiatives we've had here. Small little Pinole is changing how law enforcement is being delivered around the country because of some of the things we're doing here. And a lot of technology companies out there are aware of our progressiveness and innovativeness and being able to adapt because we're a small organization. So we've been piloting a lot of programs for them to help the profession out. So we're really excited about that. We'll continue to seek those opportunities. And then the last thing we're going to try and do to help out with staffing issues, increase volunteer opportunities for the community. So you'll hear more about that in the lookout on our social media to talk a little bit about that and increase people to come in and help us. Next slide, please. Here's just some of the volunteer programs we have. We have the Police Explore Program, which we're working hard with the high school to build that program out. And then in 2018, we created something called Pinole Posse. It was the volunteer patrols. They were deployed into our hotspot areas in our community. Now we use some technology by Smart Guardian, which we also, we're first in the nation to have. And first in the nation, excuse me, we piloted the program for them. That gives us data, gives us web-based data on when our crimes are occurring, the high times, maybe the high days. And then we use this to help deploy our resources. And that's where the Posse members are deployed out into those areas when we find out where those crimes are occurring and trying to capture them at the high times when they're occurring. Next slide, please. So we talked a little bit about community outreach. That's something that's really been a pillar of our organization. These are just some of the flyers that we've done and these are recent ones this year. You know, after COVID, we had to change things up a little bit. We certainly had a real successful mask contest, our COVID mask contest was very, very popular. You know, the cop with the cop, honestly, I don't even consider that a community outreach program anymore. It's so routine and it's been around for such a long time that everybody's doing that. So I don't even really consider that a tether on our cap. Yes, it's fun to be there. It's great to engage with our community. But when it comes to innovative, we're talking about the Where's Milo? Where we're putting out a stuff Milo into historical parts of our community. So our community, number one, can engage with the police department. But number two, they get to know the history of our community. So it's like a treasure hunt when they find Milo's. And we've gotten great feedback on that. And what stemmed from that was getting people out when COVID was just opening up. So they get out into the air, fresh air, take their family members out and really go for a hunt around our community, learn about the history and then find a reward at the end of it. And it's been really popular. One of the other things that we're really proud about is something called Be the Change Project. It's having difficult conversations with people in our community to how we can change our police profession. Now the people we have on are, some people were incarcerated for many years and had really bad interaction with law enforcement. But we said, you know, we had to be comfortable with being uncomfortable and having these conversations so we could grow from those opportunities. And we've had a great success. I've had really good friendships that we've built with people that were incarcerated that have now come out and done great. have now come out and done great um, programs in the community. And we continue to work with them and we're partnering with them. I'm really proud of that program and I've really learned a lot from these individuals that basically be in. Um, next slide please. So I just want to share with you, uh, community outreach for us is really, really big. National Night Out is our Super Bowl. Um, you know, ladies in community outreach unit do a tremendous amount of work and job for this. And uh, if you were at the event, thank you so much for being there. But I want to show everybody um, this video because it really encapsulates just the community involvement and what a great event this is. All city services were there and uh, and the entire community seemed like they were out there. So if you could play that for me, David, I'd appreciate it. Thank you again for, you know, sitting back and just watching that. It's important that we understand that our community really um, just needs these type of events and um, we're really, really happy. Uh, this year we had an opportunity to use some technology. I talked a little bit about that to get some feedback and we got some great feedback um, that the community would really like us to push us back from August uh, to October and continue to keep it with the Halloween theme. So we'll talk a little bit about that with the city manager and see what his thoughts are on that. But um, great feedback and again, thank you for all who were there and thank you for coming out and supporting us. Uh, next slide please. So here's just some community, uh, more community engagement uh, that's happened over the last year. Again, we've had to change our focus, really kind of just be progressive and figure out how we're going to reach out to our community during this COVID times. Uh, we went up to um, what you see on the right hand side there is a day where we just wanted to go out and really honor the first responders besides the police department, but the healthcare workers at Kaiser. We went up there to surprise them with lunch. We did a parade around their um, their building with sirens and just showing our appreciation for the work that they were doing to help our community. On the left hand, uh, middle side there, we partnered with Sequoia Realty and also Love a Parent where we gave out uh, turkey dinners uh, and uh, meals for everybody for people that maybe just couldn't afford it or wouldn't be able to have a nice Thanksgiving without having that. And then of course, the whole birthday party parades that we got requests for where we went out and did parades around people's houses. Um, the bottom left, I just want to share with you, uh, you know, we have, we have partners in law enforcement that have been struggling as well. The city of Baccaville was really struggling. They had an OIS, which is an officer involved shooting. Um, their peer support was drained. So we reached out to them on a peer support level and our peer support went up with our therapy dog Milo and just spent the day with them. We brought them some food, some refreshments, uh, had our peer support up there because you know what? Many times peer support people don't get the support they need. Uh, so we felt it was necessary to do that and we surprised them by doing that. So again, it's just that outreach, looking for opportunities to create difference in people's lives um, is really, really important. And then of course, on the right, if anybody knows Justin, you know, Justin Rogers, our sergeant, uh, what a great pillar of, of the law enforcement community. He's worked, he's grown up in this community. He's been in this community for a long time. But there's Justin reading to the kids online uh, through the Zoom platform. Uh, next slide please. And then here's something called the Building Bridges Program. You know, I talked a little bit about, about that feeling of, of you have to be comfortable with being uncomfortable. And uh, situations like this is why we created programs like this. Getting out into the underserved communities that don't normally interact with police officers and officers don't interact with them. So we go out to the barber shop and it's now since closed, but we still keep a great relationship with James. He was at our National Night Out and we went out and just had conversations. And what officers learn to do in this environment is to actively listen. There's something law enforcement doesn't do very well is listen. And we just sat there and we listened. We listened to perspectives. We listened to the perspectives of some people that normally we wouldn't interact with. And we're just sitting there and we just listened and we just took it in and we weren't there to solve any issues. We were just here to listen and it built relationships. And you know what they told me? We've never had an officer walk in here and just want to talk to us. So it was a great environment. We had a good time. We built lifelong relationships there and we'll continue to find opportunities to do that with this Building Bridges Program. Next slide. Here, many of you know, we did Project Hope, you know, helping others through positive encounters. This was our community outreach when it dealt with homeless, um, our homeless community. Uh, you know, there's some people out there that need help and you know, it's, it's an issue that's been involved in our city. Uh, but we wanted to take a proactive approach and we piloted this program where we went out to the Motel Six. We had some rooms set aside for these individuals so they could come in. Some members of our community that didn't have the opportunities to take showers and get clean and get haircuts, had an opportunity to go to a one stop shop, got haircuts, they had food. We got a chance to spend time with them, we gave them resources. And then we had some partners, regional partners out there, Core and some other people out there to help them provide, get them services if they were interested in doing that. And we will continue to find opportunities to do these things too. But it was great to have Motel Six partner with us because what happened was that they don't remember the last time they had an opportunity to actually go into an environment where they can clean up, take a bath, take a shower and they come out and get nice supplies, fresh underwear, socks, and then be allowed to go without being quote unquote harassed or forced into a program. Again, many people don't understand that we cannot force um, services on people that do not want services. Many people quote unquote want their freedom and I respect that. And that's why we'll continue to use outreach programs to help them and help our community as much as possible. Next slide please. Here's something called the School Liaison Program that I just want to touch on. As many people know that uh, school resource officers were defunded. Um, but we still understood the impact of what having an officer interact with our kids. Every single school in our city has an officer assigned to them. It's in their beat. They go out at least once a week and then what their goal is, is just to interact with these students in a non-enforcement type of environment. Right, we don't want children in our community to grow up just seeing officers whether they're enforcing laws or maybe doing something that is counterproductive to their belief in what police officers should be doing. So we go out there, our officers spend time with them. You see them spending time with you, they answer questions. They're encouraged to go eat lunch with them in the cafeteria, go out in the playground and play kickball with them and basketball. Now I know a lot of people in the community go, that's what we're paying our officers to do. But yes, that's what we're paying our officers to do, to build relationships, so we can build everlasting relationships. Because the next people and the future leaders of our, uh, community are these students sitting in this classroom. And that's where we want to build relationships with them. Because too often times what happens is you see an officer in uniform and a mom or a father walks by with a young child and says, don't do anything bad because I'm going to send this person to come after you. It's such a negative connotation and really starts this relationship with our community, youth of our community in a negative, in a negative fashion. So we're trying to break those stigmas and be able to create environments where they see us as human beings. Because the bottom line is we are humans behind the badge. Being a police officer is what we do, it's not who we are. Next slide. Here's something called Operation Blue Angel. Um, we've advertised this. It's really for the community out there. Uh, it's for people that are 55 years or older. If you're alone for any extended uh, length of time or if you have medical conditions. And what we do, we supply you a lockbox and when you have a key, we put it on a non-conspicuous area and we have you on a list. And then if there's a medical emergency, we have a key to be able to enter your house and get help for you as soon as possible. Again, this is a program that's open to our entire community. If you're interested in that, you can reach out to our community outreach unit. Currently I believe we have 15 to 20 residents on this program and we have used it to help officer, um, citizens that have needed help and maybe we're down and we're unable to summon help. Uh, so we were able to use this. Uh, it's a great opportunity. Um, so if that's something you're interested in, please let us know. Uh, next slide. Again, when I said we had reinvented our community outreach efforts, what we did, we did something called a virtual ride along. And what we did was we incorporated um, learning into this. And what we did was we had an essay contest and then we chose a winner out of that essay contest as to why they wanted the virtual ride along with a police officer. We sent them the link to Zoom and they spent hour, several hours with the officer as they rode around on a Zoom vault demo. No, they weren't watching Zoom as they were driving. I mean, they got too concerned, but um, but then at the end of it, we surprised them and we showed up at their house and they got to meet Milo and we actually gave them a stuffed Milo. So again, building with the community, building our youth and building an opportunity for people to again, um, have positive interactions with the officers. Next slide. Again, most people know we have our therapy dog program. Uh, again, we're the first, uh, first uh, organization in the Bay Area to have a therapy dog program. These are just some of the things that we're interacting with, community violence solutions, early childhood, childhood development down in Richmond, uh, the Children's Interview Center. And one of the things that doesn't really come up much is we've assisted many agencies around the nation with policies, procedures and how to get a therapy dog, uh, a therapy dog program started. Uh, so Jennifer and Milo are doing a great job. The one thing that's never really talked about is the impact that this has on internally in our, in our um, officers. Um, I'm going to tell you a story. Many of us know that we've had um, a local officer die by suicide uh, several months ago or actually a year ago or so. And at that time, when someone dies by suicide, you have to put out a last call for this officer. Now our dispatch center dispatches for three different organizations and one of the persons that passed away wasn't in one of those organizations. We talked to the dispatcher and they were really struggling with them not they could actually do this because it's very, very taxing, a lot of trauma involved in that. And what we said is how about we bring Milo in? And what happened was Milo sat in her lap basically while she gave this last call and she was able to get through this. And she said, you know what, chief? Thank you so much for thinking about that because I don't know if I could have gotten through this without having Milo here. That dog's impact inside this community, uh, inside our organization throughout the isolation, throughout the COVID, the so, uh, social injustices that are out there has really been a benefit for our organization. So it's a dual purpose between external uh, needs and also internal needs. And I think it's something that uh, we're very, very proud that we have it, number one, and very helpful, uh, proud that it's helpful for the organization as well as the community. Uh, next slide please. So here's some of our social media platforms. Um, uh, we have Instagram, we have Twitter and our Facebook page. Um, if you look at our Facebook page, we have over 9,000 people and that contributes to like over 40% of our community is on our Facebook page. We encourage people to engage us on our Facebook. We try to be uh, updated on our Facebook pages and our, excuse me, our social media platforms. But a lot of times we have community events, a lot of times something happens in our community, we'll share it on our Facebook because we feel that's one of the best avenues to get out to the community quickly and efficiently. So please join our social media pages and follow us. Uh, next slide please. So you know, it's one thing to be impactful in our community, but I just want to talk and talk about the work that we're doing externally as well. So Panola PD is impacting the entire profession. What you see there is an IACP magazine that we talked about our um, uh, video recording process. Now this predated COVID before everybody was doing Zoom, but we're engaging our community, giving people a platform to report crimes, you know, through um, a video uh, mechanism. Uh, it was the Facebook portal, it was um, uh, several different devices we were able to use in that time. Back then it wasn't uh, something that people were doing. Obviously every now and then it's going through Zoom and it's very, very normalized. But back then, again, it made impact. That was in the IACP National Magazine, which is International Police Chiefs Association. It made it all over the world. And then on bottom there is an article that I talked about where the officers use the thin blue online technology to actually impractical save someone's life and bring them, get them services. So again, impacting the community and impacting our profession. Our officer wellness program, the Astral Model, is nationally recognized and I get offered to speak all over the country about what Panola is doing and the uh, positive impacts we're making when it comes to officer wellness. Next slide. And then the other thing I'm really proud about is, this is Lieutenant Matt Avery. Uh, Matt is the Bike the Bridges Ride Director. Uh, last weekend they had Bike the Bridges, as you know, it raises money for the Special Olympics in Northern California. This event alone raised $93,000 for the Special Olympics. Now that's, you know, this is not something that's, uh, he has to do. This is something that comes from the heart of this individual who's, wears our uniform. And as many people in our, our community, really the heart for us giving back is at that level at the Special Olympics. We do a pole or plunge, we did a torch run, we will do um, um, shop with the cop later on and we will also do tip a cop, excuse me, what I was thinking of. But we will do those events and we'll continue to do that because that is really where the heart is, when we can give back to the community and help our Special Olympics members that in our community. And I know Maureen and I have worked um, many, many years together on these programs and just how impactful this is. And I told our officers when I come into this profession that there's a lot of things that you can do in this profession, but if you ever go to a Special Olympics thing, you will never leave there the same person that you came in because it gives you a new set of eyes and it really is heartwarming and uh, it's something very, very special to do. If you ever have an opportunity to go to an event and be a part of that, please come out and do so and you're more than welcome to join us. Um, next slide. Again, here's the torch run, the pole plunge, which I just mentioned. So next slide. Just want to talk about emerging technology, right? I, I think an organization has to start being forward thinking. We have to look for leveraging modern technology to help us with our community, help deliver police services to our community. So there's here's something that we call Q Hit. If you went to National Night Out, you got a card and in that card there was a QR code. You could put the QR code up to your phone and you could take a survey and tell us how well we did in the um, uh, in the um, program or what we need to improve on. So if you see on the left hand side, you see some of the feedback we've received. Great event, very well planned. What a great idea to incorporate Halloween theme, great family event, we love the Panola Police Department. So it's real time feedback from our people getting, you know, I, I really believe as a leader that what you measure is what's important. This is the way to measure feedback from our community. Now it's not just in events like this, but all calls to service that officers respond to, an individual who made the phone call will get a text um, survey back from the dispatcher and how well they did in their job and how well the officer did, from their attitudes, from the way they handled the situation. We get all kinds of feedback from them. What I like about this is because typically in law enforcement, the only feedback you get is the highs and lows. If an officer did really something really bad, we find out about it or if they did something really well. But this gives us an opportunity to find out how people are doing, not delta if you will, and really give us a real, real time feedback of how officers are doing and how we can improve, which is so important as we continue to be progressive and engage our community. So again, it's real time feedback. Uh, currently right now, combined rating, we have a 90% approval rating. You know, obviously, um, we're not getting, uh, we still have got about 35 or 40% of the um, surveys that go out come back. So we're still waiting to get more increased uh, survey and feedback. Uh, we certainly have something called Smart Guardian, which I've talked about, which is a bed, web based briefing. Gives us an opportunity to collect data to find out where the high crimes are, uh, what times they're occurring, what days they're occurring, so we can put our resources in that area. And then I talked about the thin blue online already. Uh, next slide please. So here's just a, a short video that talks a little about the Q Hit, uh, went out on our social media, but it really does a great job of explaining why this is an important technology for us. And again, we were the first uh, in California to have this and we actually were piloting, piloting this program for this company as well. Play the video please.
Your feedback is important to our department and we want to know how we're doing every day. That's why we're starting something new.[1621.25] That's why we're starting something new. Now, you may receive a text message survey from us after you call 911 or interact with a police officer if we got your number or entered it into our report. The text message survey will ask a few questions about how satisfied you are with the way we handle the situation, the professionalism of the 911 call taker or officer, and give you a chance to provide feedback. We'll use this information to improve our service to the community. Soon, we'll be introducing a way for you to provide feedback via text even if you don't receive a survey. Stay tuned to hear more about how you can text the chief. We listen, we respond, and we care.
That gives you a brief rundown of what this program felt about. It's really important for us to get that feedback and it's, again, leveraging modern technology to help us be better for our community. So I know the program's getting a little late and I'm just going to ask you to indulge me for one moment. Because I want to share with you the state of affairs that normally does not get discussed with council, legislators, anybody with our community. But I'm going to share something that's the inside look of what our profession looks like right now. So the video is about three minutes long and I know we're getting long, so I apologize to the people behind me that have other presentations, but please, I really do think it's impactful for you to understand the environment where our officers are working. So can you play the video for us, please?
I went to a really dark place in my mind where suicide became an option. I was going through divorce, I had lost a lot of relationships with people and I wasn't, I was isolating.
While I was trying to heal from the traumas that had put me in the position that I was in, I suddenly lost all the support of all the guys I worked with.
Yeah, shot fired. Shot fired, I'm out of the room. Sorry, I'm out.
I felt guilty that, that he died.
About 15 minutes in, I'm just listening and all you could hear is just screaming. I was only two years into my career with Boston at this point.
I was so hyper vigilant and, and I couldn't shut my brain off.
They told me that I had PTSD, that they would give me some pills that would basically remove me from my feelings.
First responders are the toughest of the tough. They're the strongest of the strong, the most resilient people in our society. And they heroically sign up for these very, very difficult jobs in which as a society, we outsource all of our trauma to them.
I remember the moment I was like, okay, I was up all night. It was just trauma after trauma after trauma, you know, the novelty of the job wore off really quick.
I couldn't think of how to get help without ruining my job.
There's a stigma in the profession that creates a barrier, a stigma in their agencies that prevents them from getting the help they need.
I didn't have somebody to talk to, I didn't have somebody that understood.
There was a part of me that said, okay, pick up the phone, call this person, this is how you're going to get yourself out of this skillfully and safely.
I look back at that period of my life and, and I just felt so completely utterly isolated.
And my ego wants to stop me from doing that. It wants to tell me, you got this, you don't need to let anybody know that this is going
And that's why I didn't know where to turn and I didn't, I beat myself up because I thought I am such a mess and I'm the only one.
I have four years till retirement and I gotta be okay and I gotta make it.
Right now, our profession is being challenged. We're going through a really, really difficult season. There's no time like the present where Officer Wellness has to be your number one priority. We have to do a better job as leadership in our profession to understand that, that that is what we deal with people. And I think it's really important that that is our number one resource and that it has to be our number one priority moving forward if we want to change this profession.
We're just coming into our second year now of really teaching structured training in wellness, mental health to the firefighter academy. Okay, I'm open to trying something different. If you had told me, me four years ago or three years ago I was doing yoga, I'd have laughed in your face. If I could plant seeds throughout the state of wellness, we'll get out there and start permeating and changing the culture.
And so much better when you have really amazing people in your life that you can walk through this stuff with, you don't have to do it alone.
Next slide, please. The reason why I share that because I think it's important to understand where internally the profession is at. As many know, I've been around the country speaking about Officer Wellness. I applaud the city council, I applaud the city manager for understanding the importance of this. You know, we are one of the only cities that has a line item budget for Officer Wellness. And again, being progressive, being innovative, because the bottom line is if we deal with Officer Wellness and keep our people healthy, number one, they'll be more of a saint to help our community. Number two, they'll retain, will retain our employees and the bottom line is we'll get a better product to bring out on the streets. Now, this is the ASHR model, I'm not going to go through that obviously, but it's a seven-point approach to cultural wellness. This has been all over the country and I get to speak and blessed by the opportunity to go travel and speak to other organizations about what we're doing here in Panol. I've often said that, you know what, this is maybe a little city with big impacts. Because if one person could change the world, Mother Teresa, right, Martin Luther King, changed the world, we certainly, our little organization could change the profession. So I just want to say thank you so much for giving me the opportunities that you give me to be able to do that and also giving us the budget to be able to bring in speakers and being able to help our people. Next slide, please. So here's some of our Officer Wellness initiatives. On the right is our Cortical Wellness App where employees have 365 access, excuse me, 24/7, 365 access to wellness. They get to get vetted therapists on there, they get to take self-assessment tests, there's meditation, there's yoga, it's a one-stop shop. And nothing's better for a leader in this profession to know that our people, when they most need it, have the resources in their hand. Recently, we just finished a 100-day challenge, it started July 6th and just ended October 14th, where people were encouraged to sign up and do something when it had to do with wellness. We didn't care if it was working out, we didn't care if it was dieting, we didn't care if it was spending more time with your family or spending less time on social media. Everybody signed up and you had to commit to this by signing a sheet, putting out what your goals were and then going through the entire process. Throughout the last several months, we brought in speakers because of the funding that you allowed us to have to bring in speakers to talk about resiliency and talk about different things, the different habits, the healthy habits and the different aspects of the ASHR model. And then, of course, a couple of years ago, we were able to use some asset forfeiture funds to build out a gym which the entire city can use to help reduce cortisol levels and reduce trauma. See, what you don't understand is that an average officer in his lifetime will have 188 major traumatic events in their lives. Compare that to an office, a typical citizen, which is about five to six, is what the study showed, so shown. Now, we're losing double the amount of suicide in all other line of duty deaths combined, whether they're collisions, heart attacks, medicals, officer-involved shootings. We're losing double the amount of officers to suicide than all other due deaths combined. And the fire service is the same way. Chris and I have talked about this. So this is why this is so important and this is why I'm so blessed by the opportunity for you to be able to understand this and to fund some of these initiatives. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart and our people to be able to do that. Next slide. So really, I'm at the end of the program. I appreciate you indulging me a little bit with the videos, I know some of them are a little bit long, but I wanted to give you a comprehensive approach. It's been a while since we have seen council, a little while since you've seen what we've been doing. Again, there's always growth opportunities and we'll continue to look for those growth opportunities, we'll continue to get better every day. But the bottom line is I think that we're doing a good job here and I appreciate the support that the council gives us, I appreciate the support our community gives us. And I'll be open to any questions that you may have. So thank you very much for having me and I look forward to answering your questions.
Chief Gang, thank you for your presentation. I know we talked about answering questions first, but if I may, I'm going to turn to the public first for public comment and then turn back to the council for comments and or questions for you. So Ms. Stone, are there any public comments for this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a few public comments. We'll start with a telephone caller, last four numbers, 5748. Caller, can you unmute yourself? Okay, we can come back. We will go with Tanya Little.
Hello, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm Tanya Little and I thank the mayor and the council for having the opportunity to speak to you today. Chief Gang, thank you for your sharing, your mission statement. Many of us recognize that racial bias is often unconscious and unintentional. What strategies is Panol PD taking to encourage increased awareness and accountability regarding racial bias? Specifically, what is Panol PD's policy currently in place to minimize racial profiling and to record data that might reveal racial profiling? Also, please explain the disciplinary procedures for cases of suspected racial profiling. Can you please explain the acronym CSOs? Heard you say that. And lastly, at a recent car show, Panol PD featured a police military tank. Why does Panol have a military tank? Thank you for the time.
Chief Gang, shall we respond to the questions as public comment comes up? So, or would you like to take note and then at the end of all comments?
If I can take note on some of these.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll continue with the next public comment, please.
Okay, we next have Rafael Menas.
I'd like to thank Chief Gang for giving this presentation. I recall the last one was, as he said, a few years back, and it covered some of the same areas, but this one is a fair bit more in-depth. The videos are better produced than the prior one was, though that's more of a technical comment. I was wondering, the end of the presentation focused a lot on sort of the mental health of officers and the PTSD, the sort of community stresses that people in the profession and also more broadly firefighters and public health supports have to deal with, especially in a time of COVID. I noted that earlier on in the presentation, there was a mention of, you know, the sort of duty to report, the duty to intervene in the case of policy violations. So I was wondering, not in a punitive way, but sort of in a supportive way, are there systems within the department to encourage officers to support each other, to talk about and discuss issues like PTSD, like traumas they've encountered on the job, as sort of saying, hey buddy, it seems like you're stressed out, is everything okay? Or a bunch of us had to deal with this thing, maybe we should take some time and talk about it. I know that the ASHR model covers a bunch of different areas, it's sort of an organization-wide structural program. I'm just curious as if there's more of a organic, I guess, or a low departmental level approach to encourage sort of building community resilience and support. And finally, I guess, I wonder whether it would be possible to bring the community into that somehow. I know that's a bit of a stretch because a lot of the times, there's a divide between the department and the community and some of the time, the traumas and the things that are going to need to be talked about because of legal reasons or because of other factors, simply are going to be things that officers could or would feel comfortable about talking with the community. But I wonder whether it might be possible to have, say, something like Coffee with a Cop, but you know, have Milo there, have some officers there and, you know, talk over things with the public to sort of share the officer side of things, here traumas they had to deal with, if they're willing to share them more publicly and sort of get a better understanding between the community and the department of the challenges that people within the department are facing. Though I realize that might be a major ask to make of people who are already facing their own traumas.
And next, we have Mark Bridge Short.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a 16-year resident of Hercules and prior to that, a 20-year resident of Panol. And I'm also a member of a collaborative, Freed, which is comprised of citizens of Hercules, Panol, well, Panol Hercules, El Suprante, and Rodeo for diversity and equity. And we've had the opportunity to meet a couple, in a couple town halls with the Hercules Police Department. And one of the things that the chief emboldened made us aware of is that there was a California Assembly Bill that was enacted in 2015, RIPA, Racial Identity Profiling Act, and that Hercules has partnered with Panol and San Pablo to source a company or a consulting firm that would develop a platform for recording the information that's required under that Assembly Bill. And so last July, well, okay, let's see, not last July, we've got that whole lost year of 2020. So in July of 2020, we had a town hall and at that time, chief emboldened indicated that a request for proposal had been let and that responses were due back in September or October. So we were just wondering, what's the status of that request for proposal? Has a company been selected? Has a contract been let? What's the expected timeline? Oh, one other thing. Tanya Little, who preceded, who also spoke, was a co-founder of Freed. That's all, thank you.
Okay, and we'll try a telephone caller again with last four numbers of 5748. Caller, are you able to unmute yourself?
Can we maybe remind him of what he needs to punch to unmute?
I believe it's star nine.
Try star six, if not, try star nine. Press star nine to alert staff you'd like to comment. You were correct, Ms. Stone, star nine, caller. You can hit the asterisk, mark the asterisk and then number nine on your phone so we may hear you. Actually, a star six.
It says star six to unmute.
All right, caller, you might have to try us again another, on another occasion. We can't, can't hear you, we're missing out on your comment.
Okay, and then we do have one more public comment, Cameron Sessai.
Hi there, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Chief Gang. My name is Cameron Sessai and I'm a lifelong resident of Panol. And I just wanted to piggyback off of Ms. Tanya Little's comment and also express that I did see our MRAP vehicle at the very front of our recent car show in Panol. It was the first thing that I noticed and, you know, pretty sure it's the first thing that a lot of our community did notice as well. I wanted to ask, was the justification for a department obtaining this military vehicle? Were there any instances that we had in the past or currently that justifies that, you know, us obtaining that from the military? And I just also wanted to ask if it is possible, if the chief would also be willing to commit to demilitarizing that part of our police and that asset. And I know that's property of the federal government, but I believe that a lot of cities including Davis, California have, you know, went through a process of returning those vehicles to the federal government and instead also just obtaining a vehicle that is, you know, not of the military nature, but still provides officers with protection from bullets or any other vehicle action.
Well, those are your comments, Mr. Sessai?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Thank you. I'm pardoned if I mispronounce your last name. Ms. Stone, any, anyone else?
No, Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Okay, let's try again for that caller, see if he or she was able to unmute themselves by...
Let's try that again.
By marking star six.
Ms. Stone, I'm seeing a public comment continue to appear. I'm not too sure if it, if you're seeing that too, there's one that appears, it disappears, it appears again, it disappears. I just want to make sure there's no technical issues with our system.
Is that the one with the telephone number?
No, it's a different one.
I'm not seeing that on my end.
Okay, right, it's off now. I just want to confirm there wasn't a problem with our tech system right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, if the caller can hear us, I'd like to welcome them or to make a public comment about this topic at a future meeting during the public comment period. At that time, Chief Gang's presentation won't be on the agenda, but we do, we can still hear the comments that he or she might have wanted to make this evening.
Mayor, we do have now one public comment that just popped up.
Okay, let's hear that, thank you.
Ms. Ruport, are you able to unmute yourself?
No, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm having problems with my, with my computer. Thank you, chief, very much, and the whole department. I, I really feel for you guys. I had a brother who was a 36-year veteran of police officer in Texas. My niece is currently a Dallas police officer and she is really stressed of the job. She says, I can hardly wait to retire. I feel for you, for you all and I pray for all of you and hope to keep you safe. So thank you, chief, and the police department. My heart goes out to you guys. Next, I do, there was an incident next door that they made a comment, but about a month ago, I was at CVS and I walked in and there were two of these store clerks chasing this one guy and they happened to catch him. And they happened to catch him, cut his coat, but then, you know, he left, he was able to escape. And one of the persons said that it was a guy who is homeless and he'd been there before. This is the one in Pinole. My question, and other stores on Cornington next door have been robbed, Stables. I'm trying to think of the other stores that were mentioned. And Chief, I'd like to know, I was part of the Neighborhood Watch and I've been, you know, very much active in the community. Is there anything that the community can do? I know the police officers are doing all that they can and a couple of people at the store said, well, they want to arrest him. They gotta see what he's doing, but there were so many witnesses. So Chief, I'd like for you to, I know it's a big crime, it's spreading. The city of Pinole relies on all the sales tax revenues that we get every year. It's gonna hurt us like every other city. For example, San Francisco, some of the Walgreens are closing. So Chief, it's a big issue. Maybe we can bring the community. What is it that we on this side can do for you to do your job better? And all I can say is maybe we should team up again and get together and the do's and don'ts. I know I've been robbed in a bag 20, 30, 30 years ago when I worked at a bank. They gave us instructions on what and what not to do, but that's a bank. I know this is different. So Chief, maybe there were some do's and don'ts you can put out there and let us know, you know, what we can do and improve our situation. I know it's, you know, a lot of us feel like maybe there's not much we can do, but Chief, we're in it, we're all in it together. And we're here to be better and to help each other out in the community. So thank you, Chief, and the police department. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment period on this item. And Chief, you've got a number of questions there. I know you've been taking note and then following your responses, I'll turn to the virtual hands that I see on my screen. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So there are several comments made and I took some notes here and if I missed anybody, please reach out to me afterwards. I'd be more than happy to address some of your, your comments and certainly always open to meet with the community members and in fact, I encourage that as opposed to just talking on the phone or Zoom. So thank you very much for your comments. I'll start with the MRAP. That seemed to be a comment made by several people. So I think Cameron, you brought that up. Am I opposed to that? Do you militarize that? I'm not opposed to anything. I, I think that the police department works for the community and if that's what the community wants, then, then I'd be willing to consider that. The reason why we have that and why that's such an important asset for us is because in our area in West County, we lack resources. We lack regional resources. Active shooters in schools is, is an increase for us. Not just here, obviously not in Pinole, but in the nation itself. We wanted to be able to have the capacity to go into a situation, not wait for a regional resource, and go out and evacuate people. And that is the reason, the primary reason. We have, we do not use it. We do not have an entry team. We do not use it for proactive approaches. We use it just as reactive. We've used it several times in the course of our duties when it comes to barricaded subjects with firearms to be able to escort, excuse me, evacuate people, neighbors from different houses. We've used it before. We had a situation off of Terra Hills not too long ago where we had an armed subject who was in a front yard where we used it to gain an ability to throw a throw phone to him and successfully mitigate that situation and de-escalate that situation. So again, I understand that it looks, you know, maybe aggressive. But I think that with what's going around the country, I'd rather have a resource available for us to get kids out of the school. We have one of the largest high schools in the area with very little capacity, if there was an active shooter, to evacuate those people. And again, I've been in SLR my career. I know what it's like. I was in the schools when Columbine was around. And back then they had to wait for resources such as garbage trucks and things like that to evacuate classrooms. I don't want to be there. I don't want to have to tell a parent that I wasn't able to get resources in to get their child out of there. So if the resource sits and we never use it, I'm okay with that. We didn't pay for it. We do pay for maintenance on it, but we have maintenance people that work in our organization that take care of the maintenance on that. So the minimal upkeep is, excuse me, the upkeep is very minimal. I'd rather have the resources available so we can go in and rescue people. And again, rescue citizens in our community. And again, so thank you for the question. I'd be more happy to talk to you a little bit more about that if you're interested in talking about it. But that's the reason why we decided that we thought it would be a good resource for us to have. Again, very limited resources in the West County. Ms. Little, I will address a couple of your questions. Hopefully I got them all. And certainly I'm hoping to meet with you and discuss these more. I think one of the questions is about racial profiling, if we have a policy in place, and yes, we do. And then you asked something about training, about what kind of training we have. Well, we go through yearly racial profiling training. And then above and beyond, what we did is we partnered with somebody to come in and talk about social intelligence and emotional intelligence. Why biases are the way they are. And then educated our employees on why biases occur, why they're innately part of, of being a human being. But we also talked about how to address those biases and how to reduce biases, how to understand our emotional responses to those things. We brought in procedural justice trainers and we brought in implicit bias trainers to help us, give us a better perspective on how to reduce those types of situations for our police department. And again, I could go into a little bit more depth with you if you have an opportunity to meet or we can get on the phone call. As far as policy violations, it would be the same process we would have for any other policy violations. We would initiate an IA, obviously go through the procedures that the employees are entitled to when it comes to COBAR, but we would initiate an IA. Something that we don't do in our organization is I don't wait for an external complaint to come in to initiate IAs. As we talked about earlier, six out of the seven IAs we've had in the last two years were all initiated internally because we saw something, we didn't like something, we were reviewing random body worn cam footage. Each sergeant is responsible to take random body worn camera footage and evaluate those throughout the month. So again, policy violations, social profiling would be handled just like in an IA process that we have in place. I, I think you asked about the community service officer. That's a CSO, is a community service officer. That's an employee with us that handles crimes that are not in progress, certainly handle traffic calls. They can go out and handle quality of life type of calls. They are not police officers, but what they are is, is people that are wanting to get into law enforcement. Maybe they're a little bit young, maybe they need to learn a little bit more, maybe they need to have a little bit more growth before we send them to the academy. But we get them in, we teach them the policies, the procedures, and then of course, give them the training that we have for everybody else. And then hopefully later on, transfer them into being police officers with our organization. I think I touched on most of those. I think I talked about the MRAP, which you had a question about as well. If I did not, please, again, reach out to me. I'm more than happy to meet with you and have a discussion with you about some of the concerns you may have. There was a question about RIPA. Ma'am, I would have to get back to you on that. I think that was Margaret Short. I do not know the status of what that MOU is with them, with the RIPA, but we are working together between the three cities. Right now, our task manager on that is Lieutenant Nat Avery and he's working with the other captains and captains to develop that MOU and go out to bid to get that service. But just to let you know, in Pinole, we partnered with a local group to start immediately capturing that data. It's not the tri-city approach yet because those requirements aren't until next year. But this year, starting now, we've already put into place, we're collecting data when it comes to RIPA, the Racial Profiling Act. So be able to collect that data, see if there's growth opportunities, see if we have any issues that are occurring. So before we officially have to report out to the state, we have those technology in place here in Pinole. As far as timeline, I would have to get back to you. So if you send me your email, I'd be more than happy to get back to you on the timeline on that. I believe there was Irma was talking about the homeless. Certainly Irma, the homeless is a concern for the community. It's unfortunate that police are not able to help them more. It's, it's a situation, a societal situation that's addressed, affecting all of us in this area. You know, we do have our community outreach efforts and trying to put those things together. One of the, one of the things that we're finding out is that many of these homeless members don't want services. We can't force services upon them. We can't move them from certain areas. Those are illegal. We can't do those things. So we try and manage them, we try and provide resources for them, and we certainly provide opportunities for them to get resources. And we work with our regional partners to be able to do so, like the Core Group. But again, I, I think you're getting to a whole different area when you talk about the shoplifting. Now, obviously there's some legislative changes that came down. If many don't know, if a crime is under $900, that is a misdemeanor and many of these are not getting prosecuted. I'm not going to get into a political conversation about that here now. I don't think it's the right environment, but I'd be more than happy to have that conversation personally with you. But certainly we have seen where people going in with their phones, collecting items that equal under $900 and walking out. And the bottom line is, it's not just a police issue, it's a DA, it's a prostitution issue. It's things that need to be revamped and we need to look at better solutions to help our community. I think, Nora, excuse me, Mayor, I think I addressed most of the questions. Again, I have no problems meeting with people, talking to people, and I encourage them to reach out and I'll be able to hopefully answer questions more in depth at that time.
Thank you, Chief Gang. You were referencing IA. Just to clarify, is that acronym for internal audit?
Internal Affairs.
Internal Affairs, thank you. And then Ms. Rupert made some statements and I just want to make certain that the accuracy is there. Quote, big crime and spreading. So in regard to the shoplifting, it seemed contradictory to some of the data that you presented, that there were certain types of crime that were not increasing given, you know, given COVID and people being pretty much indoors. So can you help us understand that better? I also received a question when I was out in the downtown, whether, you know, how was crime in, in Pinole generally speaking?
So I, I think Nora is probably right. I think that 2020 numbers, and I, and I gave the caveat when we got the 2020 numbers, that they're going to be lower due to COVID, due to isolation, due to some of the restrictions that were during the pandemic. I think that stands as the reason those numbers are going to be lower. That's why I told you I'm not going to stand up and cheer those numbers. I think we will see an uptick. I think that's, it's more than, it's, it's not something just affecting Pinole, it's affecting the entire nation. I, I do think you'll see crime numbers go up when it comes to property crime. You know, it's a societal issue. It's something that's really, really challenging for us as law enforcement as well. But certainly, there's many times when we were able to apprehend these individuals and then there wasn't a whole lot of interest in the DA and prosecuting these, depending on the amount of numbers that they've had. So again, I, I think it's a bigger conversation here. I think it's a conversation that the police chiefs, the sheriffs, and the DAs need to get together and talk about. But I, but I don't think she's wrong. I think you are going to see numbers go up. And I think it's a big problem around the nation, not just in Pinole.
Okay, thank you for your explanation, Chief Gang. And you did cover a lot of the other questions from, from the comments, questions from the members of the public. So now I'll turn to council. I think there were a couple of virtual hands earlier. And I know Chief, I hope you have yours up as well. Let me have you hold on for a bit. We'll get to council members and then I'll turn to you. Councilmember Chief?
Yeah, Chief, thank you for the presentation and all the work that you guys are doing. It doesn't go unnoticed. Thanks again. I wanted to ask if you could kind of briefly explain mutual aid in regards to the AMRAP. I, I think, I think what we're, what the community is confused about is that we're the only city that has this, but it ties into emergency response for our region. And, and if mutual aid is called, can you walk us through why we have that unit and how that benefits the surrounding area?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilman Dave. I think that's a good point. We are the only organization in the West County that has a unit like this. To be able to get safely move people from situations that you have a safe vehicle to be able to do so. Mutual aid is an MOU that we all sign, as police chiefs in the county with the sheriff, that in any organization needs assistance or they have a major incident, that they will reach out and we will send resources to help them. Our MRAP is on that, that resource list. So to be able to go to Antioch, to other parts of the county, they could call us and ask us to use that. Again, we do not use it as a proactive approach to policing. We only use it as a rescue vehicle to help our people. The other thing that I think is really important for Pinole people to understand is that several years ago, maybe I'm dating this a bit, more than several years ago, there was a big flood in town. That vehicle would be the only vehicle that could get in and get people safely out of a flood type of area because of its capabilities. So we had to think just more a little bit about that, what maybe it looks like, what are the capacities and then having that vehicle available regionally to help other law enforcement organizations or other communities out. That's the reason why I thought it was a, a good approach to have that in. Particularly having it here, when we built out a high school where now we have, you know, thousands, I think the attendance of the school hasn't increased. You know, we want to be able to have an ability to get in and help our students out if there was a need for that. And we've seen around the country that active shooters at schools are definitely increasing. So we want to be able to have that resource to save and help as many children as we can. And again, a police car is great. You can get two or three people in that. That vehicle, I could probably get 20 or 30 or an entire classroom out at a time. So just something to think about as we don't have to sit and wait for other vehicles to get here from other parts of the county, number one, if they're available. And number two, maybe having to, you know, put resources together like dump trucks or garbage trucks to help us out. Does that help explain that?
Yeah, it, it does. I just want to kind of tie in the fact that, that there are other agencies that would rely on this as well. It's not just, because it's a city of Pinole, that it's not just, you know, our department that's involved with this, with this asset. That was what I was trying to explain is that it's a, it's a big, slightly bigger conversation that we need to be in, that we need to have, or we need to take place, right?
That's correct. And again, we are listed on the MOU as having that vehicle available to help with rescue type of activities.
Right. The second question I had, you already had taken care of the question I had about the CSOs. I just wanted you to kind of clarify a little bit of how they contribute operationally. You already did that. The third question I had was the Kahoots program on the county level. I know that you and the city manager were in conversations, I, I think through the City Managers Association and, and the Chiefs Association within the region. Could you speak a little bit about what progress, where the county is with that, how that may tie into Pinole?
I can speak a little bit to that and I don't want to put the city manager on the spot, but I, they were, it was at the city managers level more than it was at the chief's level. I know they did some work on putting a strategy together. The Kahoots model was not the model that they brought forward at this point. I believe there was a capacity issue. I believe there was some funding issues where it wasn't going to be just a turnover to a, a non-enforcement type of environment. It was more of a support and law enforcement right now. I know there's different stages that they were doing. There were different studies. City manager, I don't know if maybe you could mention a little bit more to that if you could. But from our standpoint, it's more of still the same resources. Capacities have increased that they put forward through this initiative, but yet it has not moved into a solely law enforcement remove themselves in the type of situation yet.
Sure. Just really briefly, happy to add some information. I know that Mayor Martinez Rubin has attended multiple mayor's conference discussions on the issue. So there were, the county and the City Managers Association led a very comprehensive effort to assess the current response for service model for mental health emergencies. And as a result of their analysis, identified what they considered to be some pillars of a new system. And they're in the process of establishing a pilot where there'd be essentially a parallel third emergency response system. There'd be police, there'd be fire and medical, and then there'd be mental health. So they're essentially piloting the establishment of a parallel third system that would be well-integrated with those other systems, but standalone. And they're preparing some applications for federal assistance and some of that related to COVID assistance, but also Measure X. I believe it's one of the top funding priorities recommended by the Measure X Advisory Board. So they're trying to stand up a pilot that would include a dedicated call center and dedicated teams. Obviously, that's, you know, having a network that spans the entire county on a 24/7 basis is quite a resource-intensive proposition and model, but that's what they're going to be working on piloting. So they'll, I think the magnitude of it will depend on the success in securing some of these grant funds. And Mayor Martinez Rubin, you might have some additional information from the various updates you've participated in.
Thank you. So I was looking to see if I could quickly access one of the slides related to the next steps of the of the very, very large group of people that included nonprofit organizations, members of groups in support of mental health, as well as county employees. And we are, according to their plan, summer, fall of 2021, in that phased implementation approach, which largely, last I recall, included the opening of the call center, where the, if not the mission, the philosophy of the approach was to provide mental health services anytime, anywhere to whomever needed them. But it is something that the actual calling center and its triaging to the nonprofits that would be involved, let alone any in police departments. There wasn't really a lot of discussion about police department involvement, more focused on the ancillary kinds of services that would be supportive of mental health. And so summer, fall of 2021, just phased implementation with the call center as a highlight. And then in 2022, it would be further refining, spreading and scaling whatever services out of that call center will have been documented and allowing then the county to further extend or scale back, however, depending on their findings, concurrent with trying to find grant funding and other types of funding to continue the work that they would have started now. So that's what I can tell you.
I want to say thank you. That in our timeline here on council, I know that we talked about, I think the last time, it was kind of in this gray area of threat assessment by police and then having the supplemental group. But that's a lot of great information. I'm glad that we're hearing more about how it's transitioning and kind of moving towards its own standalone entity. But it does concern me a little bit only that if there is that initial threat assessment that needs to be made whenever a call for help is out there. I just, you know, as this thing develops, I think we just have to see how it goes. But there was a point where we had this conversation, Chief, when you were presenting, that we talked a little bit about if there was a way to merge the two. But it sounds like it's going in a different direction. So I just wanted to throw that out there if we had an update. But thank you, Mayor and City Manager Chief for clarifying.
Okay, the other virtual hand I see is Chief Winko. Chief Winko, before we turn to you, there was another note that I made, Chief Gang. Mr. Menes had commented on this, and if you can provide us a reaction. His comment had to do with how do officers support each other? What he had in his mind was, in my words, PTSD prevention. And then related to his question about how do the officers support each other within the department? Is my interpretation of his comments is, is there any role of community members to assist with that type of support?
Well, there's a lot to unpack there. I'll try and be brief and we probably have a separate conversation. We probably could talk a whole separate Zoom on wellness and difference between PTSD and PTSDI. But the short answer is, the support that they get is this culture of wellness that we built in our organization. You know, there's support with the seven different aspects that we bring forward, from mental health professionals to the app that they can get help, to peer support, to the therapy dog, to being able to work out on duty, to reduce cortisol levels. I mean, we have a comprehensive approach that's multi-tagged, targeted, multifaceted, includes training and includes different aspects of the program. So I can talk to Rafael offline about that. As far as getting the community involved, you know, that's an interesting endeavor. We certainly bring outside people that are culturally competent, that understand the community, I mean, understand the law enforcement community to come in and help with therapy and things like that. But getting the community involved, I'm willing to sit down and talk to you about that, but I think there's some challenges that's going to come with that. I think there's, this profession has kept these conversations in the shadows for so long, they're just coming out now. In fact, I think most people will be surprised by the video that we showed tonight and that's the reason why I showed it. I think there's a lot of work to be done and I'm not sure that, you know, going out to coffee with a cop and discussing our traumas is going to be the right strategy right now.
Thank you for your response. I think Mr. Menes acknowledged that toward the end of his comments. Okay, now I'll turn to Chief Winko. Thank you for your patience. I see a virtual hand of Chief Winko, so I think you have a question for Chief Gang.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, it's not a question, it actually dovetails very well into just the last comments. I just wanted to acknowledge and applaud Chief Gang and his team for the groundbreaking, truly groundbreaking work that they're doing with regard to public safety, wellness and PTSD type issues, both internally and externally. I can say that as the Pinot Fire Department, as an organization, has benefited from it and that the fire service nationally and more broadly has benefited from it as well. And I just wanted to applaud them and thank them for all the work they've been doing. Thank you, Winko, thank you so much.
Thank you. Chief Gang, a question from me to you and also so you can remind us as members of the public about the preventive aspect of calling the police department's non-emergency number, that the dispatchers welcome that, again, related to wanting to anticipate and/or minimize full-fledged crime happening and allowing the public to help out that way and to not to shy away from that. So can you please share a little bit about that non-emergency phone number that is available to us all?
Yes, and you would think I would have that with me right this second, but I could share that with you. But yes, contacting the non-emergency line is really imperative, particularly during high peak times. If it's not an emergency, please use that number. We will get an officer out to you as expeditiously as possible. The other thing you can do is use our video reporting service. So we can actually call and we can set you up with an officer who's to call you back and you can do it through your iPhone, you can do your portal, you can do it at work, you can do it at home. But that also will eliminate some of the processes of officer after respond out, but actually can engage with you still through that platform and you still can be able to get your services that you need. So again, I think you bring up a good point, Mayor. If it's not an emergency, please use the non-emergency number and I apologize about not having it in front of me.
If I am correct, it is the general administration number, which would be 724-8950. I know what you mean about not necessarily memorizing that because you know who to call, right, Chief? But for those of us who don't, one of the important things that I will share when I learned about accessing that number as well as how the dispatch center works is that one of the first pieces of information to give to a dispatcher when you are on with him or her is the location of where you are located. Oh, that was redundant. Your location, where are you, where are you as a caller? That helps tremendously. Sometimes when we are caught off guard, if you will, or in distress ourselves as callers, we forget all these details or we wonder why the dispatcher is asking some very basic questions that we think they know. We think they're in Pinot, we think they know our neighborhood. Well, not necessarily. The first, giving them our location when we're calling is important and then answering the questions that they have to go through is part of the job that they're doing to try to help us as best as they can. So that's what I learned, I appreciate that and I'm grateful that I haven't had to call dispatch many times, but I know that they're available if I need to. So thank you very much for all that you presented and we will continue to do our best in communicating about all the efforts that our department has for the benefit of the community. Chief Gang, you ready to catch your breath? You really presented a lot to us tonight.
Yes, I'm ready.
Be well and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will continue with our meeting and the next item on the agenda is a bit different from the topic that we've been listening to. It is in a different way, a kind of prevention. And so if we have our two guests, Ms. Anne Moriarty and Dr. Win Cowger, ready to go. Thank you for your patience. And what we're expecting is about a 10 to 15 minute presentation about this project and then again, any questions that the public may have as well as council members may have. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Great, thank you for having us. I'll just do a sound check, everyone can hear me? Great, all right, thank you very much. Good evening, council, staff and fellow citizens. My name is Anne Moriarty and I am on the board of Friends of Pinot Creek Watershed, a local volunteer organization. We are partnering with the city on a project to assess trash in Pinot Creek. With me this evening is Dr. Win Cowger, who is a trash research scientist with the Moore Institute for Plastic Pollution Research. We would like to take a few minutes and introduce you to this project. Next slide. The Pinot Creek watershed stretches from East Bay mudlands down to the bay coursing through our city. It is a rich riparian environment which welcomes steelhead trout and other wildlife. Its waters empty into the San Pablo Bay. Pinot Creek is a precious resource and the community recognizes that. Next slide. Unfortunately, as we all know, trash in its many forms has polluted the creek and surrounding areas. Trash in the form of fast food waste, plastic straws and bags and litter is sometimes thoughtlessly tossed. Some of that trash enters storm drains which lead right into the creek. And larger scale dumping along roads that parallel the creek, especially in the upper watershed, constitutes another large problem. The community is passionate about the creek and has communicated frustration regarding the problem of trash in city council meetings, on social media forums and in creek group meetings. But this problem is not insurmountable. Next slide. Pinot has installed, if we think about what is Pinot doing about trash? Pinot has installed trash capture devices in response to the state trash amendments. Pinot has sponsored coastal cleanup days and Pinot service days. The Pinot Beautification Ad-Hoc Committee, which I also served on and several of the council members served on together, also address trash. Service clubs and youth cleanups are always engaging with trash. Ordinary citizens pick up trash as they walk along the creek. Other citizens call Caltrans to say, hey, what's up with all the trash along the freeway? So in other words, Pinot is doing a lot. Next slide. But a few of us, a couple of years ago, met at East Bay Coffee over the course of several months and we discussed initiating a special project to address the trash problem in Pinot Creek watershed from a scientific angle. As a result of these discussions, we submitted a proposal to Thriving Earth Exchange, a project group associated with the American Geophysical Union. Next slide, please. The mission of Thriving Earth Exchange is that it is, my goodness, I was going to read off the slide and it looks like it's right over the top there. But anyway, it enhances collaboration among communities, scientists and partner organizations so that all communities can build healthy, resilient, thriving, just and ecologically responsible futures. Next slide, please. The project vision that we submitted is one that we can all get behind. We envision the Pinot Creek watershed as a thriving ecosystem that benefits all social and ecological communities. We hope to establish a trash assessment program for Pinot Creek to determine the impacts of trash on creek health with the targeted goal of reducing those impacts on the watershed. Next slide. So how do we go about doing this? Our Thriving Earth Exchange project harnesses the power of community science. Most of us are familiar with citizen science, which engages citizens to gather data to extend research initiated by scientists. But community science is more than that because the research question or problem is initiated by the community. In our case, litter and trash entering the Pinot Creek watershed. Other values of community science include those listed on the slide, that it honors community knowledge and priorities, it respects community agency, it values science, it opens science to change, advances environmental justice, is humble and gets stuff done. Next slide, please. So who are the community leaders involved in this project? First of all, as lead partner is Friends of Pinot Creek Watershed. Second is Earth Team, which is associated with Pinot Valley High School and youth interns, the Contra Costa Resource Conservation District, the City of Pinot, East Bay Mud and the school district. Specifically, Ella Horst, we have students who will be engaging tomorrow in a trash assessment project. So we're really excited about that as well. I'll pass this on now to Dr. Win Cowger, the scientist who is working with us on this project. If we can move to the next slide. Thanks.
Thank you. So to give you a little background of who I am and what I do, this is my second Thriving Earth Exchange project. My previous one was working with a group in Stan Virginia to assess the microplastics in their rivers there. I've also published several papers on river trash. So this is really my life's work and I'm really excited to be working with this passionate community here. Next slide. And what we're going to do to assess the trash in Pinot Creek is we're going to use a standardized methodology called the California Trash Mongering Playbook. This methodology will allow us to compare our results with studies throughout the state. We're also going to do a spatially randomized monitoring design so that our results will be describing what's going on in the entire Pinot Creek. Next slide. And so some of the expected scientific outcomes are, we want to know how much trash is in the creek. Some of the policy implications of this information are, we can plan for removal. We can also compare the creek to other places, for example, roads. And then we could do future comparisons as they increase here and decrease. Next slide. The second major question that we're asking are what types of trash are most common? Typically, we'll go through when we find trash and we'll categorize what type of material type it is, if there's any brands and items on it. And the policy implications of this are, we can identify interventions. For example, if we found a lot of cigarette butts, we could propose that there should be more cigarette disposal containers. We can engage with local producers. And then also we can assess future changes. For example, if there's more plastic or paper through time. Next slide. And then the last question is, where is the trash coming from? And the major implications of this are, we can identify interventions. For example, we could propose new street sweeping routes. We could identify opportunities for educating the public. And then also we could assess future changes and major sources of litter through time. And I think I'm passing it back to you, Ian. Next slide.
Yeah, thank you. So this is our projected timeline. As you can see, we are in the middle of data collection in October of 2021. And in fact, we had our first community trash assessment event last weekend, getting in the creek behind the library. It was a great success with enthusiastic young volunteers as well as older volunteers. Just to say that there, youth are involved and young people are involved and it was really wonderful to see those who are committed to understanding the creek better and also having a good time doing it. So we will be getting into the upper watershed in November, but we'll have to wait then until the end of April, once December starts to finish up that work as it's the season for the steelhead to spawn. And so we can't be getting into the creek then. Next slide. So this is a collaborative relationship with the Friends of Pinot Creek Watershed and all of our partners, including the City of Pinot. Ways that the city can support the effort, basically our asks include that we expedite the permitting process and waive fees for the parts of the creek that the city is responsible for, that the city provide dumpsters and access to the city courtyard, the GIS maps, which we have received so that we can map the storm drains onto the creek and find out if there's any connection there. By giving us staff time that can help work and we understand there's a lot that goes into doing this. So is staff time available? The city can help us publicize events. The city can help us publicize events. And in the future, the big asks are then to make policy interventions based on findings and to consider funding future studies. So these are important things that the city can collaborate with us on that. And I'd like, if we could go to the next slide. And just several thank yous, though. We'd like to thank Councilmember Devin Murphy for his unending enthusiasm and support, Councilmember Maureen Toms for her savvy communication suggestions, and Councilmembers Vincent Salimi and Anthony Taves for their commitment to addressing the trash problem, and to Mayor Norma Martinez-Rubin, who serves ably on our leadership team. We'd also like to thank the city manager, Andrew Murray, for his time, and Senior Project Manager Misha Kaur, Recreation Manager Maria Picasso, and also David Hannum and Jill Binghamman for their efforts. And if we could go to the next slide. Finally, we would like to thank the citizens of Penole for their concern and love for Penole Creek. So we're here, working together to solve a problem that's important to all of us. Next slide. Dr. Cowger and I can answer any questions now that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Moriarty and Dr. Cowger. I'm going to first turn to Ms. Stone to find out if there are any public comments on this
Yes, we have a public comment from Rafael Menas.
Go ahead, Mr. Menas.
So this is just a brief, sort of more practical inquiry. It's been noted recently that we're expected to have finally more rain, including significant rain over the weekend, but I believe the next trash gathering event is scheduled. How do you folks plan to handle the events when there are significant amounts of rain plans? As I mentioned, just in terms of visibility for tracking trash alone, it would create significant difficulty. Do you plan to reschedule it, to work around it? How's that going to work? So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's a good question. And basically, we're going forward and that if it's a downpour, we'll cancel morning of. And we have a tent prepared to be set up so that we can set up our materials and do things like that. Our next event is actually on where the demonstration project is, down near the mouth of the creek. So it's a wide area. It's also at low tide. So there will be less water going through. Hopefully, we'll still be able to see what's going, you know, through there. I mean, it's a blessing and a curse, right? So we're glad for the rain and if we have to reschedule, we'll reschedule.
Thank you. Ms. Stone, are there other public comments?
Yes, Tanya Little.
Thank you so much, again, Tanya Little. I am also run the Friends of the Hercules Senior Center, which is a nonprofit in Hercules. I've been a Hercules resident for over 28 years. And I was wondering if the city has a nonprofit recognition program that you can require your nonprofits to participate? And this would be a good opportunity to have some hands on deck to actually help with this cleanup. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll turn to city manager Murray about that. We do not, as far as I know, have a nonprofit recognition program that's an idea that we can have percolating and see how feasible that is to actually put something together.
Sure, and I would invite Ms. Little to contact me to share more of her thoughts on what that might entail because it's intriguing.
Yes, okay. Ms. Stone, any other public comments?
No, Mayor, no more public comments.
Thank you. So I'll close the public comment on this item and I will turn to councilmembers for any questions. Let's see, Councilmember Tate.
I just wanted to say thank you for the work you guys are doing. It's great to know that there's a lot of people showing up to these events. I wanted to ask about, when you mentioned permitting, when you're cleaning the creeks, do you have to do the 404, 401, or for Army Corps of Fish and Game? Or is it just a local permit? Because I think it's a jurisdictional water. Is there a permit to go into the creek that you need from those agencies or is it just local?
It's both. The permits are from, actually not from the Army Corps of Engineers, but they are from the flood control project.
Or the county level?
Anything that is their jurisdiction. We do have permits from them. We also have permits from the county.
I see.
So wherever we've got that, and then where the City of Penole does have jurisdiction in places like Penole Valley Park, we are in the process right now of getting permits for our October 30th. So yeah, thank you. The permitting is always important and we want to make sure that we cross our T's and dot our I's on that, so.
Is fishing, so is Fishing Game in charge of this waterway?
No.
Or have any, oh, okay. No, the reason why I'm asking is I think they have a series of grants that you could apply for and they're really, really good about giving those grants out. That's why I was wondering if there was a Fishing Game creek, there might be opportunities there for grants, so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That's a really nice suggestion. And we are currently operating under a grant from the county Fishing Game, or Fish and Wildlife Committee. And so that was for the native plant garden at the library. So if the opportunity ever comes up that we do need money, the Thriving Earth Exchange does come with a significant amount of money that we can, that we will use to purchase whatever equipment and things like that that we need. But going forward in the future, looking for other grant opportunities such as the county money would be really important. And I also wanted to make sure that I did give a shout to East Bay Mud, which has jurisdiction over the upper watershed up above Castro Ranch Road. So that's another permitting organization that we are in the process of getting our permits from as well.
Awesome, awesome. And it just seemed like most of the, if you could go back to the slide, your best. I don't know if we could scroll back.
There you go. Oops. Forward, one more.
Right, one more, okay.
One more.
One more. Okay. So it looks like primarily, these are mostly ministerial in nature. I mean, the dumpsters and city corporate, okay. Okay, great. I want to thank you guys again. This is great information and great program.
Thank you, Councilmember Tate.
Any other questions from councilmembers? Okay, I have a question for Dr. Cowger. Dr. Cowger, let us know why the data collection following this protocol is so significant and why in particular Penole would play a new, different role than it has given its other activities related to trash that you saw listed or that you had listed on your presentation.
Yeah, so, thank you for that question. So there's a difference between cleanup and monitoring. So typically, when people hear trash cleanup, you know, it's, we're going to get out there, we're going to remove all the trash, and sometimes we collect data on that. But what we're doing, we are removing the trash that we find, but what we're also doing is we're using this standardized methodology that is, has been rigorously tested and validated and is comparable to all the other studies throughout the state. So that's the major significant contribution that this project is going to bring. And Penole in particular, I mean, I don't know of any other city that's taking this level of initiative to work together with their community members to clean up trash. And so I just, I really think that Penole's going to be kind of the shining light, leading the way for future cities. Throughout the state, cities are being required to remove trash from their rivers. And so by collecting this data, we'll have a better understanding of how we can do that most cost-effectively and to do that to get the most amount of trash out of the river and stop it from getting there in the first place. So, so yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of what makes me really excited about this project.
Thank you. So you are surrounded by other scientists who have been doing, who have had, as you described, their life's work related to trash. And are there any things, is there something that you anticipate might be a challenge to implementing the program as you designed it?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we've already, we've already worked through a lot as a group. You know, we've just been talking about like permitting is crazy across a watershed because you have five jurisdictions across this one area, you know, and doing all that and all the other community members that have been putting in extremely amazing amount of work to get this orchestrated as well as organizing the community members to come out and volunteer for this project. I mean, I think that, to me, those are the hardest things and I'm very thankful that they're leading the way on those. In terms of the, in terms of the science, this science is as good as science can do. This is, this is the cutting edge, what we're doing here. And I'm really excited to see the data that we get out of this. I mean, this is, this is going to be like the top of what researchers are doing right now. And to see, to have community members steering the way on what the questions we're actually asking are is just, you know, icing on the cake. It's like, that is, that is going to be, for researchers, this is the dream, you know, to have your work actually being applied, so.
Thank you. Well, it's definitely a labor-intensive project. We counted the number of hours that volunteers have invested up until now and that we anticipate, if we anticipate more involvement from members throughout the community of different ages, different physical capabilities, given, you know, the physical nature of this work going into, it's kind of like hiking. So if people like hiking, if people enjoy the water, if people enjoy the outdoors, then this is a project with which they can be involved and at the same time help collect information that could be of use somehow to be determined. Now you had a number of asks. Can we please turn back to that slide, please? Okay. So tell us more why this providing dumpsters in the city corporation yard would be, would be something that would be needed? You really expect loads and loads of trash like what you have behind you? You know, there's different levels of trash throughout the creek. Hopefully, we won't find as much, but we don't know, right?
I can, I can, I can take a stab at that one. Basically, when we collect trash, whatever it is, we have to still do something with it. And so in the past, we've used, you know, people have used their own garbage cans and such like that. But that's not necessarily appropriate. And it's also not appropriate to use private garbage cans like a store or, you know, anything like that. So it's got to have a place to go. And so the thought is, is that if the city can offer, you know, that service, that would be the best place for the trash to go.
Thank you. So I have a question for our city manager and maybe our public works manager might be available also to help answer this. But I know that staff, public work staff, collect garbage throughout town on any given day. Is that, is that trash separated in such a way that we know, for example, what is recyclable, what is not recyclable, things of that sort? So I believe part of the work that this Thriving Earth Exchange project is going to do is going to be, to some degree, separating the trash that's collected so we have identified what it is. So back to the question about the extent of trash identification that city staff do, or is it merely picking it up and disposing of it properly?
I'm going to say with a fairly high degree of confidence that unless it's in a specialized container that allows people to deposit recyclables separate from, you know, refuse, it's all, you know, sent to the landfill. The staff doesn't go through and sort it or catalog it. So yes. And as you know, there are increasing requirements from the state for source separation, reuse of different types of waste materials. But no, if it goes into just a trash can, a public trash can, then it goes, you know, into a larger dumpster and goes to the dump fentanyl.
Okay, thank you. So I think this project's findings will maybe give a little inkling as to indeed what it is people find with a little bit more detail. Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Tate, you got your virtual handup?
Yeah, I just had one question with the GIS maps. Are you guys able to pull data off of the county website? I know that flood control, usually those are open data sets that you can use. Is that something that, when you say you need maps, is that for, from the city?
Um, yeah, actually, Win, I'll let you go ahead and address that one.
Yeah, Misha gave them to us recently, all of the maps that we'll need. I think we had, it was, we had put this on there before. And so thankfully, Misha already has us taken care of. We have everything that I think we'll need for GIS maps for now, but if we run into any other questions down the road, then we'll reach out.
It sounds like you guys got the tools and everything ready to go, so. Sounds great. And that was free, right? Zero, sweet, no cost.
Thank you. Ms. Card, did you want to describe what it is, you know, for the public with those GIS? How helpful, why they're helpful to have GIS maps as overlays to the selection of sites that the project had had?
Yes, I, you know, the GIS data is always helpful for those that are visual to kind of understand exactly what areas could be targeted. They're also helpful in the sense that if we were going to apply for any future grant funding, those can really serve as a basis in those data collection efforts.
You reminded me of something. Correct me here, Dr. Cowger, but this project is an assessment, so in a way, it's a baseline and it's the first time that this protocol is attempted here in Penole, right? Anything else that we can know about? Why is it a baseline and why we don't regard it other than that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's definitely the definition of a baseline assessment. It's the first assessment. I guess the other, the other part of a baseline assessment is we are assessing the entire creek. So we are, we are getting a snapshot of everything that's going on in the whole creek right now. So it's not just like a bunch of, you know, it's not, it's very targeted in that, in that realm. So we'll be able to say something about the whole thing.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time. I think you've gotten some questions from the public and suggestions even, and questions from councilmembers. And something that I would like to recognize that you've done, which you did not mention here as part of your presentation, but with regard to the invitation to members of the public to participate in this, following Saturday's trial run in the library, you have an exhibit there of the maps or as part of the map and informing the public about this project as well as a bit about the watershed itself. So for members of the public who wonder about that, you are listening here to Dr. Cowger and Ms. Ann Moriarty, who presented specifically about the Thriving Earth Exchange Penole project and you are invited to participate, so please contact them. Ms. Moriarty is local, is a friend of Penole Creek Watershed, and/or as well, members of the council who have been involved with this. So thank you both. Have a good night and we will see you again at some point to find what you all have to Have a good night and we will see you again at some point to find what you have discovered.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will move on to consent calendar and we've got six items on consent calendar. Ms. Stone, are there any members of the public wishing to comment on any of these matters?
There was one hand that popped up. Oh, here we go. Emma Rupert.
And Ms. Rupert, please let us know which, which item you are commenting on, A through F.
Actually, oh, here we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. The item I want to call, Mayor, is 8F, Ephesin Frank. Should I just go ahead and ask the questions?
Ms. Rupert, council members pull items. You, as a member of the public, may ask a question about the item.
Okay, thank you. 8F, it's the amendment to the City of Penole Conflict of Interest Code. My question is the addition of four job classifications. It's on page two. I have a question. The four are Human Resources Director, Assistant to City Manager, Public Works Director, Community Development Director. Now, and the deletion of one of the job classifications was going to be the Community Development Director slash City Engineer. I heard when I was in the last meeting a couple of months ago that the Assistant City Manager's position was going to be eliminated. Now I see a position Assistant to City Manager. Is that the same position? I don't understand because I don't see it deleted? Or is the Assistant, the Assistant City Manager going to a different position? I, I really don't understand that. Can someone explain that to me?
Okay, thank you for your questions. We're going to take note to see if there's anyone else who has questions on this or other consent items and then respond. Ms. Stone, are there any other public comments?
No, Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment period. And if we may have City Manager Murray as well as City Clerk Giopu to, to explain a little bit, there were several, several things that came up in Ms. Rupert's comments. So to the extent that it's related to the agenda item, can you please offer an explanation?
Sure. City Clerk Giopu, would you like me to take a crack at it and can round it out?
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, so the, one of the purposes of the Conflict of Interest Code is to identify what levels of reporting different members of the city staff have regarding their financial interests. So what we are trying, are doing as part of this update is simply to make it consistent with what we consider to be active or expected future classifications. So if we want to be able to hire someone in a classification, employ in a classification, and we think they have certain decision-making responsibility, they need to be listed in the Conflict of Interest Code and the level of reporting specified. So it's a little bit different from, I mean, we don't, we had a, Penole had a very unusual arrangement in which we had someone, a, a classification called the Development Services Director who happened to serve as our city engineer. That's a very unusual arrangement. It's an incredibly broad portfolio of responsibilities to be overseen by one person. As part of the reorganization and this year's budget, we're dividing that position into two different classifications. So they, in removing that from the Conflict of Interest Code, we're expressing that we are not expecting that the City of Penole is going to have that classification again. Again, that's because that's a very unusual arrangement. The other classifications that are being newly added are classifications that have been approved in the Management Compensation Plan. So again, anytime we add a new classification, and classifications come and go depending on the city's operational needs and the council's approval of the budget, budget, excuse me. This is to bring the conflict, the additions are bringing the Conflict of Interest Code up to the classifications that have been specified and have approved salary ranges in the Management Compensation Plan. We do have an Assistant City Manager right now, a person in that classification. We think it's possible, although that classification is taking on new responsibilities as a result of the reorganization. It's quite a standard classification in cities our size. And so in going through this budgeting and organizational change, I don't think we're making any determination about whether at some time in the future, we might have an Assistant City Manager with the same responsibilities that position has had in the past. So it seems premature to eliminate that from the Conflict of Interest Code. So that's my explanation of why we have the additions and one deletion that we have in this update of the Conflict of Interest Code. Happy to answer any other questions about that. City Clerk Giopu, anything I missed on that?
No, thank you, City Manager Murray. I think you've covered it all. Thank you.
Thank you for your responses and for helping us understand the intent of the code, intent of the listings on the, on that document. Okay, so now I'll turn to council members to see if they have any questions on any of the matters under consent calendar. And if not, I'm ready for a motion. Council member Tate?
I just wanted to ask a question about the local emergency. This is just to codify that telecommittee moved for January, or to January?
Thank you for the question, Council Member Tate. I'm happy to take that one. So this is a resolution to make sure that the city is in compliance with AB 1381, which will allow the city to meet virtually for the next thirty days. As indicated in the staff report, we will be bringing forward this item every thirty days for the council to reconsider and reassess the need to continue meeting, to meet virtually so the council can provide direction, you know, essentially every month on whether or not you'd like to continue in this, in this fashion.
I see.
Okay, understood. Okay. Council member Murphy?
Yeah, I'll make a motion quickly. I just want to make a quick amendment to the August seventeenth minutes on page twenty-four. It said that I requested a future agenda item regarding the Christmas tree lighting. I just, I may have said Christmas tree. I think I said holiday tree lighting. I know there's a, a little bit of difference. There's a lot of holidays to celebrate, so I just wanted to make that minor edit. But outside of that, I'm happy to move the approval with those edits of items A eight, eight A, excuse me, through eight F.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? City Clerk Giopu, may we have roll call vote, please?
Council member Toms?
Yes.
Council member Murphy?
Yes.
Council member Tate?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salibi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez Ruben?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda. We have a public hearing. Actually, I am going to make a motion that we continue item nine A, which is the ordinance heading chapter eight point one zero, related to organics reduction and recycling ordinance to the Penole Municipal Code.
I see.
So there was a, I made the motion and council member Tate seconded. Okay, any discussion? Council member Murphy?
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful for us to explain a little bit about why we're, I think the motion was to table or to continue it. And then also it'd be great to have a estimated date on when this is coming back to council.
Thank you.
And the motion, if possible.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so my understanding is that there is a party with a significant role in implementing what this ordinance would entail. And so staff would like to have the time to have those discussions with our contractor, Republic Services, and allow for some understanding, some mutual understanding about what the ordinance would, how the ordinance would impact the agreement that we have in place with them, which is currently, yeah, currently in place. And deferring this, tonight's discussion about this would not, there's still time for us as a city to have this item brought back within the timeline required so that the ordinance can be put in place by the beginning of the year. Is there anything that you would like to add, City Manager Murray or City Attorney Kesh?
I think you summarized it well. So in short, as we discussed before, there's state legislation, AB thirteen eighty-three that requires the city and other parties to undertake some new efforts to reduce organics in the waste stream. And the first timeline-wise obligation of the city under that legislation is to enact an enforcement mechanism to make sure that all of the various parties that have new responsibilities of that, under that legislation will be compliant with the state requirements. We have been working in partnership with our regional JPA, Recycle More, as well as the other cities in West County, and our franchise hall of Republic Services on an ordinance. So all the cities in West County needs adopted ordinance on the same timeline, hopefully by the end of this calendar year. And we received some comments from Republic and some feedback of this draft ordinance that I think, in all fairness to them, as one of our partners, requires some detailed review. And so we want to take some time to make sure that we fully understand what their feedback on our draft ordinance is. And we will return to the city council with proposed ordinance. It may or may not be changed based on the input feedback we get from Republic. And we want to have this gone through the first reading, the second reading, in thirty days for, for, to become effective before the end of this calendar year. So we're talking about bringing this back at one of the meetings in November. It's not clear whether we're going to be ready. We'll have had time to fully review Republic's comments in time to get this on the agenda for November second, I think, is the meeting date? Do I have that right?
Yeah.
Okay. If not, then it will, we'll be targeting November sixteenth. So not a long delay, but again, we want to make sure that we understand all the significant actors. Recycle More, the city, Republic are all going to have responsibilities under this new system. And we want to make sure that we understand all the participants' concerns and perspectives before we move forward with our ordinance. That wasn't a short explanation. I apologize for that. That was a long explanation.
Well, that was a fuller explanation and I hope that we can understand better given that explanation. So thank you. Council member Tate?
As far as timeline goes, we're talking about November second for the first reading. And then when, when's the second reading?
Well, potentially November sixteenth for the first reading. We haven't yet.
Oh, sorry. November sixteen and then the second reading. Isn't there a time that has to be in between readings? And where does that put us as far as January first?
Council member Tate, good question. Thank you for that and I'm happy to offer. So the, so it's SB thirteen eighty-three does require that the, the ordinance go into effect by January first. There are, there's been some subsequent legislation passed by the state which kind of extends that and allows a little bit of a grace period for cities. Many cities are going through the same process right now and will need to, you know, bring forward this ordinance within the last month or two of the year. So what we're planning on is either on November sixteenth, and we could even push it out as, as late as maybe even the first or second meeting in December to get the first read in place. We would have to do a second read because it's an ordinance and it wouldn't go into effect, any ordinance, it doesn't go into effect until thirty days after the second read. But given the grace period that was recently extended by the state, we feel comfortable that we'll be well within the timeframe to comply with the state law and, and should be fine, even if it pushes out as far as December.
Then I had a question about the municipal code committee. Would this have gone through municipal code or is this? I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering why we, why we missed or skipped that step. Is that something to do with Recycle More or what is the procedures for, for these type ordinances to go through municipal code? Or, or is it something that wouldn't?
That's a good question. So typically, the municipal code update subcommittee convenes at the direction of the council. So if the city council directs staff to, to convene a meeting, oftentimes to, to take a first pass at an ordinance, to vet it and, and provide some, some early-stage feedback to staff so that when we present it to the full council, it's been vetted by, you know, the subcommittee members. This one was a little bit different in that we knew we had to bring it forward. We were working with a number of different kind of stakeholders on this language and it really wasn't ready, frankly, until just very recently when it was being brought forward to the city council. So, you know, I think if we had a little more lead time, we probably could have brought it to the subcommittee, but that's something that I, I would have sought direction from the council about whether or not you wanted to convene that meeting.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or more discussion? So there is a motion to continue this item to future council meeting. We've heard the timeline and have a second. So it seems, if I can modify the motion, to bring back this item by November sixteenth. And the second was, council member Tate?
Yes, certainly.
Okay. And no further discussion?
Just a clarification. Were we going to bring it back for the public hearing November second?
Staff feels that it's likely going to be ready for that on November sixteenth.
Okay, if we give it a date certain, do we not have to publicize it again, you know, take it back up for public noticing if we continue it to a date certain?
That's correct. If we do move to continue it to a date certain, then we would not need to re-notice the public hearing. The plan would be to have the first reading on November sixteenth, if that's the direction of the council. I think staff would like some flexibility just because we're not, you know, it might take some time to go back and forth with the representatives from Republic. We have heard from Recycle More and they seem to be fine with the draft ordinance, but I think allowing some flexibility would be good. So I think it would be staff's preference to maybe not set a date certain and to allow some flexibility with the negotiations if that's agreeable to the council.
Okay, so then let me go back to, to the motion and that is to continue this, this item as a public hearing in a future council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. The aim will be to bring it back within, before the end of the year, but just to give, allow that flexibility. Thank you so much. If no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, may I have a roll call vote?
Thank you. Council members Toms?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salibi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez Ruben?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Do we have any new business? We do. We have item eleven A and that's possible duties, powers, and membership of a city technology and communication subcommittee. The action before us is to discuss and provide direction. City Manager Murray?
Thank you. My, my screen shows our old business item, which we're gonna, we'll take first. That's...
Did I overlook that? Let's see. Oh, that's right.
Old but not completed.
Pardon me. Yes, item, item ten A. I, I apologize.
No worries. So as you all know, we had a presentation by staff at the council meeting September seventh as kind of an update on the various things the city has been doing recently regarding climate change. One thing that some of us who have been with the city for less than a decade learned was that the city has a sustainability element that envisioned the city completing a greenhouse gas emission inventory as well as a climate action plan. And so as follow-up to that presentation of information about what plans had been laid and our current activities related to climate change and greenhouse gas emissions, the council provided direction at that meeting to staff to do a few things. And one was to review the many goals, policies, and actions listed in the general plan's sustainability element and report back on the status of those to the city council. And again, it was quite revealing to me to work with staff to research that sustainability element. The city... The city had many, I think, very progressive and ambitious goals in mind at that time, so I'm looking forward to figuring out what we've accomplished with respect to those and what more needs to be done. We're still in the process of putting that assessment together. When that's completed, we'll report that out to the City Council. The other direction that the City Council provided at that meeting was that staff prepare a resolution for council's consideration, which is the item before you tonight, doing a few things. Declaring a climate emergency and directing staff to complete an inventory and a climate action plan, as well as to bring forward a mid-year budget adjustment to fund those things. So council provided some of that direction, and staff would be on its way, regardless of whether we had a climate emergency resolution this evening. We'd be working on a greenhouse gas emission inventory and climate action plan, but the resolution kind of recaps those things and reinforces them. So one of the things that precipitated the dialogue at the city, and I think at the City Council regarding a climate emergency, was that the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution declaring a climate emergency last year. There are many other cities that have also taken that step, passing a resolution declaring a climate emergency. We have a very active, climate-oriented environmental organization, 4CL, in Contra Costa County that's drafted a model resolution. So based on the discussion at the council meeting and some of these templates, staff put together a resolution for City Council's consideration, declaring a climate emergency, and including other statements of fact and intention. And we put together, we assembled something that we thought was appropriate for Pinol and where we're at in this initiative, but are certainly happy to see the City Council make any modifications it would like. So that's our background, happy to answer any questions or receive any amendments the council wants to make to the resolution.
Thank you. Before I turn to council, again, I'm going to open up for public comment on this item, the resolution declaring a climate emergency and directing staff to take certain actions. So Ms. Stone, are there any members of the public wishing to comment?
Yes, Mayor. Debbie?
Good evening again, council. I have some concerns regarding the climate action plan as proposed and the model, specifically as it relates to the big discussion of retrofitting and the elimination of fossil fuel. Specifically on page 174 of 182, it states that within the resolution it should require replacement of aged-out appliances with all electric models. Specifically, how would this be accomplished and what cost? Would it be a one-cell a home? How much would that add to the sales price? And how does that affect the affordability for housing? Would homes have to rewire from 110 to 220? And since Pinol is an aged community, would the power grid specific to neighborhoods be able to handle the additional load? Electric heating isn't nearly as efficient in use as traditional gas heating, and the cost of electric heating can be upwards of five times the cost for gas. An electric water heater is much smaller and much more expensive. The proposed resolution would also require that the energy be 100% renewable for both municipal and community electricity service. I interpret this to mean that the property owners would no longer have the option of using PG&E and be required to use MCV, or they would have to use PG&E program that is 100% renewable at a higher cost. How much higher would those costs be? How do you go about eliminating fossil fuels in the built environment? And just how is this statement defined? And what do you mean by built environment? Require all new construction and models, remodels to ban natural gas and fully electric? How much will this cost? And once again, what are the impacts to the electrical grid and the home's affordability? What happens when there are blackouts and people are without electricity for days? Are gas generators banned as well? How will the requirements affect people taking out permits for a new roof? Are you going to require solar? Solar may not always pay for itself, depending upon the use of electricity and its geographical location, among other things. What will be the ongoing cost of implementing this type of climate action plan? So these are a few of the questions and comments I have. To sum it up, at this point, I have a problem with the term "require." I agree, we need to take the next step towards a climate action plan, but it appears we're taking a leap into a black hole. My suggestion is that you give staff direction to explore some of these requirements and the costs associated with it, and the requirements that have yet to be discussed. Or perhaps instead of jumping on the proverbial bandwagon, why not wait and see how the county cap program operates and their successes or pitfalls? Tonight's resolution is too vague and needs much more discussion and detail beyond the limited staff report. Thank you.
Jackie Garcia-Man?
Hi, my name is Jackie Garcia-Man, and I am here representing 350 Contra Costa. And I am strongly in favor of the climate emergency resolution. And you will be in very good company as we sent a letter. There are dozens and dozens of cities across the state that have already implemented these, and they implement them with teeth, just like the climate action plan. And to reply to Debbie, I do want her to know that these regulations are coming at the state level. The PUC, the Public Utility Commission, is implementing this shift. And there are really a lot of increased efficiencies with heat pumps and electricity that we're not going to go into a bigger blackout situation because of the increased efficiency of new appliances. And there will be programs at the state level that will help pay for these. But to start at the city level, we know that actions that take place at the city level trickle up and have a big effect on the surrounding cities and counties and the whole state. And that is why California has been such a leader in passing climate emergency regulations, resolutions, as well as bans on gas and promoting electrification in new construction and in retrofits. So this is the future, and we all know it's coming. And, you know, how the sausage gets made, it's ugly, but we got to start somewhere. And once we start, the programs come. And there is a lot of money in the infrastructure bill to help with these programs. So, you know, I urge you to be pioneers and to be leaders. And it's not just joining the bandwagon, because California is unique in the US in terms of really leading on climate. And we have a lot of work to do. You know, we're right before the COP26 meetings, and the future is here. We are experiencing fires and floods and torrential rains in other parts of the country, and we just can't bury our head in the sand. We have to start making the changes now, and we can't wait for others to take the lead. We can lead from the local level, and we're going to get there. And it might be tough at times, but we will ramp it up. As there is demand, we will fill those shoes. Thank you.
Rafael Menes?
So I'd like to go over the clauses in the resolution being discussed that talk about the concrete things that the council will be doing by adopting the resolution. It's pretty brief. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of City Pinol is hereby declare a climate emergency, and be it further resolved that the City Council supports the state of California's greenhouse gas emission reduction goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, as established by Senate Bill 32, and strive to achieve carbon neutrality by 2045, as established by Executive Order B-3518. And be it further resolved that the City Council directs staff to completing greenhouse gas emissions inventory and prepare a CAP that includes THG emission reduction goals that align with the state's THG emission reduction goals of SB 32 and Executive Order B-5518 for City Council's consideration. And be it further resolved that the City Council directs staff to present a mid-year budget adjustment to fund completion of the GHT inventory and CAP. And be it further resolved that health, socioeconomic, and racial equity considerations should be included in policymaking and climate solutions at all levels and across all sectors, as the consequences of climate change have significant impacts on all city residents, especially the young, elderly, low and color communities of color, and other vulnerable populations. Now, most of that doesn't read to me like saying we're going to require that only electric heating be used, or we're going to require certain specific policy actions. There's a lot of suggestive policy actions that are included in the county's climate emergency resolution and included in the sort of draft letter that's attachment B, I believe, to this item. But the resolution that the council would be adopting tonight, if they adopted this resolution, doesn't take steps that are that concrete. The main thing that it does, it says city staff should do this thing and this other thing, and they should come back to us later to make sure that there's funding for it. And aside from that, it's mostly signaling the various whereas clauses before that, basically saying what the city thinks about climate change. Like, we agree that this is a problem, and we agree with the things that other people have said about it. But in terms of actual concrete changes that are linked to this resolution, I don't think that there are that many. Which, you know, is fine, it's a first step in the process, it's a declaration. But I don't think that we need to say, it's possible there could be a whole bunch of consequences, therefore we should do this, because this isn't locking in that much. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. Okay, I will close this public comment period on the item, and will turn to staff to clarify the comments that were made and relative to the resolution that we have in place. What I see is that there are some specific, the rubbles, if you will, at some point that the council will be taking a look at.
Yeah.
A climate action plan for the city, as well as an inventory. And in that process, there are, I imagine, will be ample discussions about some more specifics, about how the city would go about meeting the goals that align with the state's interest in the reduction of greenhouse emissions. I also do not see anything in particular that requires certain actions. I believe the language that Debbie read was from the larger document that the county put out for us all to review. But that set of statements requiring particulars was not included in the resolution that we have before us. City Manager, can you please help us out with that? And either confirm that or let us know how it was?
So yes, I think there might have been some confusion on the part of the first commenter. They were, I think, viewing some of the statements and provisions of both the county's resolution and the model resolution that is being distributed by 4CL as being part of the resolution, the Pinol City Council resolution that's before you tonight. Those are not provisions of the resolution before the City Council. As one of the commenters noted, and you just noted, the provisions of the resolution before the City Council, the direction is quite narrow. It's declaring a climate emergency and directing staff essentially to complete an emission inventory and a cap. Those things will be, the cap will be presented to the City Council, a draft for its consideration and adoption. That might have really specific interventions that the city is intending to pursue, but we don't have any of those details right now. And it feels premature to get into those, because we don't know what the problem is yet. So I think those comments stem from perhaps confusion about the various resolutions that were attachments. Again, the one being proposed for the Pinol City Council is quite narrow, actually.
Thank you. Councilmember Toms?
Yeah, actually, I was going to also try to clarify that, you know, there's three resolutions. One is the county's, one is the template, and one is the one that we have under consideration tonight. The comments directing about, you know, all electric models for the built environment, just to clarify that the statement on the resolution talks about, you know, practices that may include, but are not, will not be limited to strategies, measures, and policies that... And then below it says to require replacement of aged-out. So even if this was, you know, if we were going to have this language in there, it has the language that, you know, says that this is a strategy that we, you know, that a jurisdiction might include. So I wanted to clarify that. And also just state that I see this as, you know, the initial steps. Step one is adopt the resolution. Step two is to do the inventory and the climate action plan. And then step three and steps beyond that are going to be implement the climate action plan. So I wanted to clarify that. I am in support of this, and I want to thank, you know, all of the commenters. You know, there's some that I see at several meetings on this very topic, on different venues. So there's a lot of advocacy out there, and I just wanted to recognize them, that they've been doing a lot of work recently. Also, at some point, whether it's tonight or whether it's the time that this comes back to the council, assuming that it passes, that where we do a budget adjustment, you know, to pay for development of the climate action plan, that we talk about the review process. How is this, you know, are we going to be engaging our planning commission? Are we going to maybe set a, you know, have a committee of folks that oversee it? I know that, you know, with the climate action plan that's being revised for the county, that they have a sustainability commission that is really the, you know, the member of, that's the organizational structure that's working with staff to bring that forward. So we should think about that. I don't think we need to think about that tonight, but perhaps when the budget amendment for implementing, for doing the cap comes forward, we should think about it at that time.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Thank you. First and foremost, I wanted to thank staff for your work on this. I know that we made a motion at our September 7th meeting around some of the therefore be it resolved clauses that we have in the resolution tonight, including the greenhouse gas inventory and the climate action plan. And I do think it's valuable for us to have tonight's conversation. I think it brings more context, certainly more relevance, and particularly given the comments, I think that climate misinformation is an epidemic. And I think it's really important that we use this as an opportunity to educate the public about really how this impacts our world, and most importantly, our health in Pinol. So it's great to have some public commenters tonight. It's great to have folks who may even disagree with the resolution hopefully learn some things tonight. But it's also a great opportunity again for us to revisit what I think Councilmember Tom said about just also the timing of these things and a reporting structure to circle back. I wanted to amplify a couple of things that I thought were important given our comments tonight, but also given the resolution as a whole that we'll be voting on. First and foremost, I think, as I mentioned before, I think it would be great to have and add a clause here that we do have some type of quarterly report, similar to us passing intermediate resolutions around the COVID-19 pandemic. This is declare a climate emergency. If you read the whereas clauses, you see references to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, who've said it's cold red if we don't act. When we talk about climate health, we're also talking about children. I know there was a commenter who said something about natural gas. Well, guess what? Children who live, you know, children who live in areas and in buildings and single-family homes with natural gas are more likely to have asthma. That's our children, right here in Pinol. 42% increased risk of having asthma for children living in a home with a gas stove. a gas stove. If that's not an epidemic, I don't know what is. If that's not a problem, I don't know what is. Sixty percent of homes that have gas stoves, right, have exceeded and really said that this is really bad air. The US EPA declined, confirmed that. When we talk about a climate health emergency, and I, again, I appreciate staff support in this, I want this to be equivalent to what we're dealing with, with the COVID-19 pandemic. There are hundreds of thousands of people who have died because they don't have access to clean air and clean water. We ourselves live between two refineries. Contra Costa County as a whole is one of the most industrial counties in the world. And because of it, we happen to have higher rates of asthma, higher rates of breast cancer, higher rates of other health issues that many folks don't have. And it's important for us to recognize how that's impacting our community right here in Penole. You know, I think that personally, I've experienced this. I know that change is hard for some people. Change is hard for me. Climate change is hard for me. But the reality is, if we don't take action now, it's actually more costly in the future than it would be just to take action now. So we can throw around these, you know, misinformation and claims around how much it costs today and things like that, but the reality is, it's going to be more costly in the long run if we don't take action now. So I'm really, again, really proud of our staff. Thank you, City Manager Murray. Thank you, Misha. Thank you to all who put together this resolution, because this is an opportunity for us to declare and really take certain actions, right, and take important actions and bold actions with a timeline, with quarterly, hopefully, reporting that allows us to make sure that this is not just one step. I agree with Councilmember Tom's, again, this is, this is really the initial step to take, because these are just words, right? The next step is really our actions and our planning to execute those actions. So I wanted to say that first. I do have a couple of things I'd like to highlight in terms of what I see could be potential changes. You know, one of the things mentioned here in the resolution talks a little bit about the, I'm sorry, not one of the things. I'd like to add a clause here that say, that says, therefore let it be resolved, that we build in quarterly reports to the council on the progress of our greenhouse gas inventory and climate action plan once it is created. I think, again, in terms of timing and us understanding our progress, I think that will be a valid and important declarative statement for us to make in this resolution. And I think similar to what we've done with, again, our resolution around the local emergency ordinance, this would be parallel to that as well. So I would like to make a motion to add that as well to these, to this resolution.
I don't see other hands raised. I think we're allowing time to have that motion sink in, and if I hear a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so second, where the motion is to add an additional clause about report backs once a plan is in place, report backs on progress once a plan is in place.
Or is it from now until the plan is in place? Because we want to have, we want to know how development of the plan is coming along also.
Sure. I think that's right, Councilmember Tom's, and I would be happy to amend my motion to say quarterly reports, really on the updates around both this resolution itself, but again, the progress on our greenhouse gas inventory and inventory, and also our climate action.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'm always sensitive about having staff do more that, you know, doesn't, I would rather have, you know, maybe the city manager be able to include in his report quarterly the status rather than having a formal memo. And I'm just wondering if, if that translates to what you're looking for as a quarterly report?
Councilmember Tom, are you referring to me or the city manager?
Yeah, you, Devin. Councilmember Murphy, yes. As far as what, what does a quarterly report look like? Is it, is it a verbal report from the city?
I think it would be uniform to the other reports we receive. I think we receive four financial reports per year. I think we receive a couple of reports from our departments as well. So I think we would parallel that, in my vision, to those reports and keep it consistent.
Okay, so something that would be on the consent calendar?
I don't create, well, I don't create that right now, but I think that's what I would see, vision. But again, City Manager Murray or city staff, you can also, I guess, allude here to what you would see in a report.
Right, so I think that the system that we've established and broadened recently of having quarterly updates on some of the key initiatives, so we have a quarterly update on the budget, CIP, strategic plan, and I think this, having a quarterly update on this climate set of initiatives makes sense to present in that same format, and that's not a hardship for the staff.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Well, thank you both for clarifying that. And so that's, that's the motion, a quarterly report backs from, from now ongoing. Okay, related to, to.
Until we hopefully get out the emergency, which the IPCC says otherwise, but let's hope.
Until, until we get out of the emergency, that we say, oh, I don't know, in our lifetime, right?
If I may, can I just run a revision to the resolution passed you for your consideration? So to respond to this request for amendment, I think it might be sensible to insert a new be it further resolved clause four. So the third one is be it further resolved, city council direct staff to present mid-year budget adjustments, dot, 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 and then insert a new clause there, which is be it further resolved, that the city council direct staff to present quarterly updates on the city's progress on these directives, because there are a number of things that staff is being directed to do, and I think that captures the, the complete bundle. Is that acceptable to the city council?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I think that's acceptable, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the idea is not to lose, lose this, as with a number of things going on among staff, to just have it be part of the regular reporting mechanisms that we have in place. Thank you for that. With regards to further discussion, I don't want to minimize the concern about costs that Debbie's comments were alluding to. Confusion aside about where that source of information that her comments was, and I would clarify that, that the requirements, what particulars aren't included in the resolution before us. The matter or the concern about costs, given, given the built environment of Penole, I don't think is as a unique concern to Penole. There are cities older than ours that are also going through these changes. I just want to acknowledge that it's, it's, you know, it's a valid concern for residents in Penole that are facing, that are, they're going to face the need to upgrade, et cetera, to use different sources of energy. So I don't think we ought to minimize that and ignore it. And I believe wholeheartedly that part of the work toward creating a plan is going to keep in mind those considerations. And as another person who commented, mentioned some existing resources and perhaps even newer ones that we don't know of today, hopefully will be available in legislation to help implement what is, what we consider necessary in order to help with, with climate change efforts. So thank you for listening to that. Councilmember Murphy?
Well, I think Councilmember Tom's had, oh, no, I thought I did saw it, say it, thank you, mayor. I thought I said. And, and mayor, thank you for that statement. I think my, my ultimate point here is that the cost of us not taking action right now is more costly than us taking action in the long run. And that's, that for me is important because we are those people. We are that community, and if we don't take the action, Ms. Long's statement is actually relevant because it's actually bringing our taxpayers in Penole more harm if we don't take the action today. If we don't look at how, again, natural gas and fossil fuel production, both in the state of California, but right here in our county, if we don't look at this and say, this is a problem, it's costing people who look like me, people who look like, really, everybody on this call right now, it's costing them money. It's costing them time. It's costing them family members, right?
It's costing them health, yeah. I understand, I understand.
Let me, this is, thank you. And, and so ultimately, the reason why these things are important is because we're trying to save money. And I would actually, this is my second point, which was, I would love for us to consider how in the long run, our both push for, you know, a more carbon neutral city saves us money, which we haven't gotten to yet, which is why we're, we need to have these kind of conversations. We're talking a lot about, you know, a mid-year budget adjustment around the greenhouse gas inventory. We're talking about the idea of a climate action plan. Well, at some point, right, we're actually, what we know is that folks who invest in clean energy, and oftentimes they're richer people, wealthier people, they are saving money in the long run. And so it's time for us to, in goodwill, make sure our residents deserve what they deserve, which is to have clean energy alternatives. And we've done that, which the, which of course is identified in the resolution around MCE and our, our buy-in to MCE. We are actually the city with the most residents of any city who have decided to go cleaner. MCE residents in Penole have 91%. That's huge. No other city, no other member city in, in the region has that large of people than Penole. So we have people in Penole who are saying they want to go cleaner. Now we've got to make it cheaper for them, and we've got, we've got to lead really from the public side. I do want to say lastly, that I think here's a huge opportunity we're missing that we talked about last time, and I think our consultants at ESG mentioned, but our sustainability education. Climate denial, climate deflection, climate, you know, misinformation, like I mentioned. It's not only an epidemic, it's a tactic that people, and mostly fossil fuel companies, have used historically. It's a tool they've used really to confuse people, people like us, people who are normal, everyday working people, students, young people, seniors, who, you know, are just trying to live our lives. And sustainability education, as I believe the ESG consultant mentioned, is something that we're missing the mark on in our town. And it's actually directly tied to the need for a climate health emergency resolution. Because those who don't know how this is impacting us, as I mentioned, with kids and asthma, women and breast cancer, black and brown communities and lack of access to water, right? Those issues and the lack of information of those issues is actually what is indeed driving the climate crisis. And so if we don't have a, some clause here that says it is imperative that we educate our community around sustainability, this could be in the form of our Friends of Penole Creek Watershed Science Project, right, which we're doing, or it could be something else. We've got to, we've got to center the education piece. But it's also the opportunity to connect folks, right? I think Ms. Long made also a comment, and Ms. Long's getting a lot of attention today because she's making probably, you know, comments that are probably believed by some people, but are, but need to be addressed because they're misinformed. This, this link, an intergenerational link between seniors and young people, we are all impacted by the climate crisis, and if we don't work to educate ourselves together in an intergenerational approach, we're actually all going to lose this, right? We're all going to lose what we see as a clean energy future, the world we see, the Penole we want to live in. And so I do want to also suggest that we add a clause here, and I'll make a motion to add a whereas clause to say, excuse me, therefore let it be resolved clause to say, we want to prioritize sustainability education in our city and work with community groups, including Friends of Penole Creek, including Earth Team, including the Rotary Club and other, other community organizations that center around sustainability for all people in Penole, not just youth, not just seniors, but all residents in Penole.
Thanks for your comments. I'll echo the all residents of Penole. You all know my background is in public health, or if you don't, I don't often stress that, but certainly climate change has been a matter of discussion in public health circles. Now, we have increasingly brought it to circles of governance, and so, yeah, I wholeheartedly support, you know, this chasm, if you will, of how informed someone is about the effects of climate change versus those who have been more involved in, in these kinds of initiatives and our programs and speak the language associated with this. Yeah, it's there, I would agree. And it is kind of comparable to, you know, the, the problem that we addressed earlier through one small effort, the, you know, the litter assessment, it's one small effort, but there's so much, you know, litter, we could have discussions about litter in and of itself is also, or how we fight it, and through picking that, picking it up is also a consequence of the kinds of promotional efforts done by large corporations that have us thinking about addressing that downstream rather than upstream. So whatever we can, I mean that literally and figuratively, whatever we can do on a larger, larger scale, I think that, that would be helpful in that we start the way we know how, with the planning and thinking about, about climate and climate action, and we bring each other along, and that's what I want to stress, we bring each other along. I think some of your comments have, have, have addressed that, have mentioned that. Councilmember Tate?
I just wanted to echo a few sentiments and some things that kind of popped out in this conversation. This is a great conversation, by the way, and I'm glad we're having it. I think when we talk about climate change, it is, it is a community issue. There's no question about that. I just think that the education component, I'm wholeheartedly supportive of, because we have an issue about people recognizing cost versus investment, right? An investment pays off at the end, and I think that's distinct, there's a distinct difference between when people say, well, it's going to cost this, it's going to cost that. I have a small-scale example. I just recently converted my mower and all my power tools over, you know, my yard tools over to electric. There's no more oil, there's no more gas, there's no more filter changes, there's no more, we're just going with electric equipment that performs the tasks in my yard. Very simply, I made an investment to become more efficient and to lower my costs over the long run. That's basically what we're doing when we say we want to move towards a green economy and, and to start reversing child, climate change. So I just think that, that a lot of people in our community have to really look at this as a business decision when they're, when they're seeing us making these decisions up here. Granted, this resolution is setting the framework for us to do more work down the line, and I think that's when things are going to get difficult. Someone mentioned the sausage-making process, right? Never pretty, right? Never pretty, but that, that's coming, and we're going to have to meet that as a community, and we're going to have to do this as a community, a community moving forward. So I just want to thank everybody for the conversation. I think it's great. Resolution looks fine to me, and I just think that we have to talk about investments and what that means for our community moving forward, and not so much the cost component, because costs are always going to be cost, no matter what. It's what we do with our resources and how it pays off in the long run. So just want, I want everybody to really think about that before, before we start panicking into, okay, we're going to get into this cost spiral and not be able to dig our, our way out. We have resources on the public level, state level, federal level, so we're going to be able to do this, we just have to be very strategic on how we do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Tom?
You're on mute. Councilmember Tom, you're on mute.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy added another be it further resolved regarding education, and I just wanted to confirm before I, you know, say I agree with that, as the seconder of the motion, I wanted to make sure that staff had captured that phrasing.
I haven't done it yet, and I would love a specific suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah, because we heard, it's kind of a motion, but we didn't hear a second, so I think that's why staff hasn't captured it.
Just kind of repeat the motion.
Sure. Well, and I, I think I, yeah, I mean, it's really that I just didn't know how to capture it exactly, words to make sure that I got what you were expressing, so.
Yes, so, and just to be clear, I, I, I had, um, we had the motion. We had, um, two additions that had to do with, uh, quarterly reporting and directing staff. Uh, and, um, that was repeated by our city manager. It's just that last piece about the education component that I want to make sure that they've captured.
Sure. And Mayor, is it okay if I just go ahead and repeat that motion?
Please.
And I did pull in something that Councilmember Tave said, so I, I hope that this is inclusive of all comments of council members. Um, I would move to add a be it further resolved clause that says, be it further resolved that we recognize and acknowledge the importance of sustainability education, climate health education, climate resiliency and adaptation investments, and the impact of climate change that, that poses an ex- existential threat to our city in the region now and increasingly in the future.
Okay, and I'll second that piece also.
Okay, so we have, first we have a second in our discussion. I, I'll have to comment that even all those terms in that particular clause require education.
Yes.
They really do. Um, and so, and so that's a charge to all of us to, to be better informed about what all that means now that we would have it in a, in a resolution, certainly. And to, and to help promote, promote that amongst ourselves as well as among the public uh, in our regular colloquial kinds of exchanges that we have. Uh, because this field is, is, has its particulars. And again, those, those of you who have been involved, more involved in, in these efforts are more acquainted with the language than, than others. So, yeah. Okay, uh, any further discussion? All right, may I have a roll call vote for the additional clause, please?
Councilmember Toms?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Tave?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez Rubin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
If I may, um, politely request Councilmember Murphy that you email that to me. I'm not that quick a typist. Um, and, or we could refer to the video, but if you email it to me, I'll make sure we get it in the resume. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Boy, I did jump from this, um, part of the agenda, uh, earlier, didn't I? Skipped over something that really I shouldn't have. So thanks for, for bearing with that, um, mistake. And now we get to the item that follows.
Mayor, I don't know if we made a motion on the entire resolution, but I could be wrong. I thought we were making a motion to the amendment. I'm happy to make a motion.
Thank you. Let's go back.
That was a motion. I seconded the entire motion that you made with, um, with the changes that, um, uh, our city manager made and then that third addition.
Great. And I, and I guess I motioned approval for the entire resolution.
That was my second was for the entire resolution.
Okay, well, thank you for, for clarifying that because I thought we had just voted on the specific clauses and, and you know, we really are talking about the entirety of it. So we're all clear. We're on a resolution, we've got a resolution with two.
Just formally, let's just make a motion because I'm pretty sure I made a motion to add a clause and I don't want you all to go back to the records and, and feel like this was in vain. So I'm happy to move, uh, approval of resolution, uh, declaring a climate emergency. And I don't know what the resolution number is because it's not in front of me. Resolu- I'm, I moved to approve resolution.
Councilmember Murphy, the, the numbers are assigned after approval. So you don't need to include that piece, but, um, I appreciate the, the extra motion for clarity is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion and Councilmember Toms, did you want to be the second?
Yes, second.
Okay, all right. I think we've had discussions unless there's anyone else. I don't see any hands raised. So Madam City Clerk, take us through, please.
Thank you. Councilmembers Toms?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Tave?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez Rubin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, so now we've, we have formally adopted that resolution with the changes. Now, item eleven eight, possible duties, powers and membership with City Technology and Community District Committee. We are to discuss and provide direction. So again, City Manager Murray.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, so the city council requested a future agenda item, uh, some time ago. And I apologize that we staff haven't gotten this to a council agenda until now, but I'm happy it's here now. Um, the creation of a ci- city council subcommittee uh, to address the topics of technology and communication. Um, as is noted in the staff report and as you're probably all aware, um, you know, numerous cities have, um, well, you know, city councils are entitled to establish subcommittees for whatever, to focus on whatever matters they deem important. The general purpose of the subcommittee is to allow a subset, not a quorum of the city council, to delve deeper into a policy matter that they would then provide recommendations to a full city council on. Um, subcommittees can be established, uh, as either what we call standing committees, um, that are formed for, uh, the purpose of addressing a continuing matter and have a, um, kind of a fixed and regular meeting schedule. Or it can be created as an ad hoc committee, which means that they're formed to address a, a limited term issue. And they may have a more irregular meeting schedule. So the city council has established a number of subcommittees, uh, already, including the finance, uh, storage preservation, um, the wastewater subcommittee, municipal code, update ad hoc subcommittee and others. So, uh, council is considering, um, another one. And numerous California cities have established subcommittees, um, to address issues relating to technology, communication, engagement, um, innovation and related topics. A number of California cities also have, uh, residence, um, uh, commissions that address these topics. And so, um, really this is a matter for, uh, the city council staff is happy to support, uh, a new subcommittee if the city council thinks one is, um, valuable to create. This topic or these two topics of technology and communication are already issues that, um, the city council is, um, highlighted as priorities of the city. So, um, the strategic plan that was adopted, um, in February twenty twenty, uh, has strategies, special projects specifically related to technology, including specifically the development of an I T, um, plan. And also has two strategies related to communication engagement that are going to result in a communication engagement plan. And city staff has been working on those. We've hired consultants, um, to work on both of those. And those plans are in the process of being developed. So I do think that's a, um, knowing that we're already doing work in this area, that those, that work is going to result in plans, drafts of which are going to go to the city council. And the council will be able to weigh in on before they're, uh, form, finally adopted. Um, you know, is a consideration, I think, in what the focus and timing of the creation of a technology and communication subcommittee would be. So that's the background on this and we're happy to answer any questions or, uh, do whatever staff directs.
Thank you very much. As I've been doing, I'll turn to, uh, find out whether there are any public comments on this agenda item and then turn back to council. Mr. Stone?
Yes, Mayor, I'm just coming through to make sure, no hands, uh, no, there are no public comments.
No public comments, no calls in? That I'm still trying to find the audio for this?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, then. Um, I will close the public comment period now and then turn to council for any questions, um, to City Manager Murray about his staff report. No questions. Okay, so, um, before us, then is some discussion and providing direction, um, to staff as to whether, um, and the forum and when and how this this communication subcommittee ought to, ought to put in place, if at all. Um, one question that I have is, um, what would be the purpose of this, this, um, subcommittee? I think there were several options presented in the staff report, but I'm not certain whether, um, it's, it's char- charter, if you will, uh, or its bylaws would have to be formed, um, in order to, to have it be, um, for example, an ongoing committee. You know, and, and I say that, um, not entirely, uh, knowing how some of our existing, um, committees to which staff, I'm sorry, committees to which council members are assigned at, at the end of the year have historically been put in place, other than the ad hoc ones which I've been a part of. Uh, but any new ones, you know, this is where into the realm of new, new committee formation. And along with that, um, I also have in mind, um, some of the, some of the committees which, um, members of the public have participated in. So one question is, um, this would be a subcommittee of council members only. Is that correct?
Well, I don't think there's a specific proposal on the table. Um, we just provided some background information on, um, what could be. And there, these, um, subcommittees of city councils that address these types of issues take all sorts of different forms across California. So it's really, I think about, um, it's a question for the city council to decide. Um, you know, what's the need? Um, what would the charge be? Uh, the current, uh, subcommittees, ad hoc and regular, I think most of them have been formed through the adoption of a resolution. Although as the staff report notes, they could be created through, um, a, a minute order of the city council. Then there'd be the question of assigning, there'd be a process for assigning council members to serve on that subcommittee. So I think it's, it's really quite wide open. Uh, we don't have any, staff doesn't have any recommendation about this. This is really for the city council to, uh, decide, uh, what the, whether the need exists, what the focus should be and the like.
Okay, thank you. So, um, where would this sit? In which department would this sit? In, as a committee, when you mentioned, you know, staff are open to, to having this and would support it if directed. Um, given this transition that we're in, I'm trying to get us an idea of who would staff it.
Um, so in the, our new org structure, which we're implementing over time as, uh, you know, we hire new staff, as people, um, transition portfolios, um, both communication and information technology are responsibilities of the city manager department. And so, um, that's, uh, you know, composed of just a few people. Um, we, I would be one of the staff, uh, probably the prime staff liaison to this committee. Um, that might change over time depending on, um, what the, the required staff report, uh, is. But yeah, I would be the staff liaison initially.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we've got some council members with their hands up. Uh, Councilmember Murphy?
Yeah, I was gonna, um, I, I guess I was gonna kind of pitch start the conversation because I feel like it's, it's almost that we're forming the subcommittee ourselves in a way. So I thought maybe I would just give some, uh, context as to why I even suggested the agenda item. And maybe that would help start the conversation. But thank you, City Manager Murray, for, um, number one, for your leadership in bringing this back to our, back to the table, but also for the research that was done. It was, um, very eerie to me that some of the, uh, groups I was looking at, you all put together, and I don't think we conversed about it. So that was pretty cool. Um, and I was just really moved. So some, one example, for example, is Palos Verdes Estates. Um, and the city of Palos Verdes Estates who have a technology advisory committee. Um, their committee actually does involve residents. So their council, um, uh, similar to what a commission would be here in Pinole, their council serves on this body, but they also appoint five different residents, um, to serve on their, uh, technology advisory committee. Um, Mayor, you asked a couple of things, um, in terms of kind of like what, I guess, scope of work or responsibilities. Um, here are some things I would list out for this committee. Um, I think number one, it has to deal with, uh, or recommend to our council matters of resident engagement. Um, you know, means, methods and systems of electronic communications or in-person communications for enhancing open discussion. Um, we've talked a lot about this and the challenges we've had in our town. Um, I don't know for how long, but as long as I've been a council member, so let's just say a year, at very least. Um, and I think that this would provide an opportunity where we as council members can, um, and hopefully more folks. Honestly, I, I would suggest us add, um, well, we'll talk about the membership, but I think we should expand the membership beyond the council. Um, and hopefully that would allow us to really help with, um, identifying ways and better ways of enhancing our, our communication and, and residents' concerns when they're brought up. Um, number two, I think this committee could serve as an advisory committee on government transparency. So, uh, we, and thank you, Director Guillory, because you've, you really steered this, the ship here. But, um, we talked about participatory budgeting and this idea and this tool, a forum around how we make financial decisions. Well, that's a technology tool. Um, I talked last council meeting about the importance of like, now that we have that tool, we have an entire community that needs to engage with that tool. We need to teach them and communicate with them and educate with them on how to use that tool. Um, including me. Even though I'm an advocate for participatory budgeting, I need to know how to use the tool. Uh, so I can be an ambassador for, you know, for the tool itself. Um, so I see our government transparency solutions as kind of a piece of that. Um, number three, future technologies, right? And things of, um, enhancing services. So we've talked on this council and have allocated, I believe, sixty thousand dollars at this point for municipal broadband. Um, if that is an idea that we will, well, we've decided to move forward with no matter what. But if we continue to expand on that, we'll need to discuss how we can enhance resident services, connectivity in homes, um, citywide wireless and wireless master planning. Um, this, this year, I think we've had two issues with our website. So, uh, when those issues arise, they, they may still arise. That has nothing to do with individual. It, this is technology, this is how technology works. But when those things arrive, um, how do we create contingency plans for it? And how also do we report back to staff, what's both staff, but also our council members, um, and advise each other on important communication models? Um, so I think those three points would be sufficient enough, um, for, for, you know, a citywide technology committee, uh, and communications committee. Um, on membership, just as my last point, I would suggest that we, um, potentially involve, you know, a liaison from each commission. Um, I think this is an opportunity to, you know, we've had coun- we've had commissioners, um, I think on TAPS before come to our council and say, hey, there's no communication. Um, that didn't feel good for me. I'm sure that didn't feel good for mo- most of us on this coun- on this council table or, uh, soon. Um, and so I think this is an opportunity where we can find liaisons of different commissions and, um, pull them in into how to communicate better to their own, uh, for their own meetings. Um, yeah, I, I, I'm open to membership. I think that's something to discuss, uh, as the entire duties and powers are. But I think the, the, the gist here is that we take a working, we really lead the effort as a council in terms of de- developing a working group for our communications. Um, we have the communications and pub- and public engagement plan coming. This is also an opportunity for us to really lead on the execution of that plan once the consultants develop it. Um, we need to make sure the consultants are really supported with in-house people, not just staff, but in-house city council members and, and community members who are able and ready to do that work and steer that work. Um, and so I think those are just some of my ideas as I was thinking about this. And I've been thinking about it for a long time because I do see a high, high need for it. So I hope that kind of, uh, I guess pitch starts our conversation.
Thank you. I'll, I'll have some questions and comments for you. I just made some notes here. For starters, I agree that all that, this one you outlined is pretty much, uh, you know, a big, a big charge here, but you've got to start somewhere. So, um, yeah, on any of those items, probably be sufficient. Um, Councilmember Tave?
Um, I, I saw this committee as a, as similar to TAPS. Um, anything related to traffic and pedestrian safety, our TAPS committee would meet with Tamra. Uh, there was an officer that usually came in to give some type of consult. And, and that conversation, especially from the community, would, would happen. And you can get into the weeds in these committees. Um, redo that, uh, a council, it usually takes us till one o'clock in the morning. I, I think having this committee is going to allow staff a resource to go to to discuss, uh, uh, commu- communication, a flyer or a mailer or, uh, the website and, and allow community members to offer comment with, with that platform. I think that's going to be able to, to get us a lot of really good information from, from a volunteer, um, committee, is similar to TAPS. Um, I do like the idea about having, um, different, uh, people, uh, you know, from planning commission or from. or from TAPS committee to be on there as well. But I think we need to provide those forums or those spaces for people to really dive into the weeds. And a lot of times, really great ideas come out of them. And those great ideas can then get processed by staff to get to council so that we can, you know, do better for our community. I think that this is a great idea. I know that we have a lot of old equipment in Penole TV. I'm not sure what the replacement plan is. But that committee can dive into the weeds there and really find out what those steps are. Our website, it's had glitches since we started. I mean, there's no secret, it is what it is, right? But this committee can start to look at solutions for that moving forward. I mean, texting, mailers, I mean, there's a lot of things that can be hashed out with the group of people in the committee. So I'm in favor of doing something similar to the TAPS committee or the community service committee, something as far as structure to be similar to that.
Okay. Well, if we are in discussion, I would say that we, oh, okay. Before I comment, I'll have Mayor Protem Salimi. We haven't heard from you tonight very much. So let us know what your thoughts are on this.
I think it's an excellent suggestion. And I think the key of communication is to keep it short and clear. And I know that the meeting is getting into 10:16 and it would have been probably even longer if we had gotten the other item from the agenda. But the key of successful communication is keep it short and clear. And this is what I have learned in aviation. You don't want a mother coralized or microphones or underwater air control. It's going to get mad. But, you know, keep it short and clear, the key of successful communication. Thank you.
Okay, well, you know, you're short, what's short, what's clear? What is it that you're communicating about? All of that, you know, the purpose of another group, its charge, its composition, how people will be recruited, et cetera. I think all that has to be worked out. I hear the interest about having certainly enhanced communications, whether that's, you know, persons, they're using technology, identifying technology. Increasingly, there are means to communicate using technology. There are different interests. We have different segments of the public that are more keen on one type or another. It just covers the spectrum. And if you all want to get into that, you know, I applaud you. Go forth, help us with the communication between what happens in city hall and information going out to the public. How, you know, how deep those dives are, how into the weeds those dives are, that again is related to what the charge of the committee would be, its frequency of meeting. I'm a little concerned, although it sounds attractive, to draw from the existing committees. I don't want to speak for the members of those, but I think already they are talking about people who currently are, whose time is being used or absorbed by us. And really, I think we ought to open up the membership to this committee to people who, you know, think about who hasn't been part of those commissions and who have strung identifying policy or community or research, have you, that complements what's that doing and also supplement to some degree because staff have limited time as well. I think we also have to recognize that whatever charge this ad hoc committee ends up taking, there's a difference between talking about the desire to have different activities be implemented that would address technology and communications, whatever form that takes. And then there's the reality of how available people will be. So I think we have to also recognize our desire versus volunteer time to be available to carry out all of these things. And I say that from years of volunteering, you know, before coming on to a council and recognizing as well the activity of the various subcommittees that I've been on. Some of them have had full-fledged, you know, participation. And others, as groups go, only a few people are the ones that are most active in them. And maybe we need all of them, but it does get a bit, either if not redundant, a little bit tiring. So let's just be, you know, aware of that. And I think ultimately, it's whoever steps up and agrees to be part of this, you know, that you work with. But I also don't want to, at some point, we're going to have to align with what our interests are as council people and the people who actually spend their time as volunteers, that they have a positive experience doing so and that they are clear on what their charge is so that they don't go away disappointed rather than be more energized, if you will, about joining us in this. Because I know that there have been those kinds of experiences as well, not always as positive as we think they ought to be. Councilmember Toms?
Yes, thank you. You know, I think it is a good idea to have, you know, perhaps a committee, a subcommittee of the council that may or may not include other liaisons from other committees. You know, different folks are going to have different ideas. You know, older generation are going to communicate a certain way and younger generation are going to be more, communicate more with technology. I think that's all, you know, great, and we can bring that together. But I'm wondering if it's, if trying to discuss a scope, it might be premature because we also have a communication and engagement plan that's underway. And I'm wondering if that plan will help inform what a scope of a committee would be. So I'm just, I'm just wondering if it's premature or if we, you know, say, yes, this is something we want to move forward on and we kind of wait till the communication and engagement plan comes out to really cement what the scope of the committee would be or if folks have, you know, a really good idea what the scope should be right now. Just want to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Yeah, well, I think Councilmember Toms, I feel like I've said this before, but no plan has the potential without the right people. So I am all into developing a plan and feeding in the troops to that plan as we do it. And when I say no plan has potential without the right people, I also, this was my original point, was just to say, I wanted to mention this, but we have such a tremendous value and asset in our city who's oftentimes behind the scenes, who's oftentimes not in front of us, but plays a huge role in terms of communications. And that's Mr. Snell, David Snell, who has a tremendous portfolio of work around media production and communications. And really, it's just tied to some of the things that we need to amplify in our town, whether it's cable television or whether it's just making sure people are seen and heard well on these calls, right? Which, again, these are all aspects of our communications. I'm not too sure what's going to be in that plan. What I am sure about is that we, at this point, have hired somebody to execute a plan that we don't necessarily know, excuse me, we have hired somebody to create a plan, but we don't know who those folks are going to be to execute one. And that is the, as I mentioned before, that's kind of concerning because I just want to make sure we support each other in a lot of these plans we have going. I mean, we're Elizabeth Warren out here with plans, which is great. But I want to make sure that we as a council are really taking the lead in terms of driving those plans as well. And I don't, frankly, I don't think that's happening. I mean, I mean, we have committees that are, we've appointed that haven't met yet. I mean, we've talked today about the municipal co-committee and we had an ordinance and that committee didn't meet. I want to see you all meet. But moreover, I'm driving, I guess I'm driving this technology and communications committee because I come from this aspect and I've heard so much community input around the lack of communication or the lackluster communication that we have, that we have to find something to do. I mean, we've got, we've got to move somewhere. If we keep hearing these comments, if we, you know, keep having instances where Penole Television is at one event but is not at the other and we don't have a space to talk about that and engage in that, where and when are we going to do it? And so I guess my, you know, my last statement is really, you know, we can decide today that we don't want this committee. But again, where and where are we going to create the opportunity to make people fit into that plan? I'm not confident we have that yet. And I would rather us start this committee now and start brainstorming that, brainstorming a scope, brainstorming a power, maybe even making an ordinance like some cities have around their committees and codify this than to just sit around and wait for a plan to come out. And then again, that we're not sure how we're going to execute. So I just, so yeah, just some thoughts there. And again, if folks don't support this, no hard feelings. I think my biggest thing is how do we make the mark on the next step in terms of our strategic communications? And yeah, I just want to mention those things. But thanks again.
Yeah, so perhaps I'll put this out to staff as direction that having heard some of the comments made today about this agenda item, that our consultant consider this as part of a means to address the problem of insufficient communication or maybe one-way communication, whatever the problem is as it's defined, that has had us hire them to create that plan. I heard an expression recently, and this kind of reminds me of, this discussion kind of reminds me of this. There's a solution to, we're having here, we're presenting a solution, but we haven't yet understood the problem entirely. So it's a solution without a specific problem attached to it. But that's for the orientation of the problem. I think what you're getting at, Mary, and I appreciate, is that we want to be proactive about what we're doing, knowing that underway is developing a plan. And then the next steps, it's likely that we're going to come back to council and have a discussion about, okay, what do we do now that this consultant has presented the plan? And you want to get ahead of that, I understand that. Because there's a lot to be discussed about what this committee would do and its composition and its charge and its duration and all the weeds, as I see it, all the necessary discussion. And we're not going to necessarily cover that now. I'm wondering whether we want to continue discussion of this item as sort of like a party or whether we simply say, okay, you know, let's include this being, this agenda item and all the comments associated that tonight adds information for our consultants to mold into their plan. And have them come back to us.
If I may make a comment, I don't think that prior to Councilmember Toms having offered that idea, it had occurred to me that, yes, this, I mean, yes, you know, kind of the role and scope of a subcommittee like this is something that our communications consultants would be looking at, particularly if we ask them to specifically do so. So I actually, I mean, I, you know, I have a slightly different perspective on the city councils and cities' progress on this issue. There's nothing we can do about how communications have been in the time prior to all of our arrival. But in the time that, you know, this current council has been on the council and the prior one, they identified it as a, you know, a key priority. We've hired, they budgeted the funds, we've hired a consultant. And I think the consultants are hoping to have their draft plan within a few months' time. So I actually think we're, there's a lot of activity. There's a lot more activity that's probably been in this space for quite some time at the city. And I do think it, you know, I think that observation of Councilmember Toms that we should put this question to them because they are going to be recommending ways to continue to keep communication growing and fresh over time. I think posing this question to them is a very sensible idea. And it hadn't occurred to me before Councilmember Toms had that observation, but I think that makes perfect sense. And they can help provide some ideas on what the scope would be and composition would be based on where they think the needs are. So just offering that for the council's consideration.
In my understanding, at this point, they're in the process of doing some fact-finding, which includes the interviews of various members of the public as well as us as council members to inform their plan. And yeah, along with what Councilmember Toms has says, this committee is a means toward helping implement that, whatever shape that plan takes. So Councilmember Murphy, I appreciate all the comments that you've made. Shall we then, you know, kind of have all of this feed into what the consultant's work is about? And then we'll be hearing back what they summarized, which is likely, I hope, to include things that none of us have yet been made aware of, many of which we have, the problem of not fully communicating, et cetera. But I'm hopeful that there will be some new things as well. I don't think there's any motion to be made. We've had some discussion, unless there's some direction. Councilmember Toms or Murphy, would you like to make a motion as to your suggestions so it's clear to staff what direction we're taking with this?
I mean, I would make an affirmative motion. So it seems like, I don't, I don't know if Councilmember Salimi, excuse me, Mayor Protem Salimi, or, I mean, I would just make an affirmative motion. I brought this as an agenda item, or at least suggested this as an agenda item. We all brought this in consensus. And my, like I said, my thoughts are that the plan is going to come out. We're going to come back to this, probably relevant to get ahead. We have a problem statement in my head. The problem statement is that we don't do enough. We are doing a lot, City Manager Murray, I think we are. At least I would, I would say that. That's also probably biased considering I'm in the council and we feel like we're doing a lot more than we've done in the past. But the emphasis, I think, here is that we're still not doing enough. We're making up, we got to make up for lost time almost. And that's not on anyone, well, my point is, we got to make up for lost time. And so again, my motion would be more affirmative towards creating, you know, I would move to create a city technology and communication subcommittee.
I agree now. Seconded.
Okay, so we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to clear that I agree with that situation that Councilmember Murphy said. And I think it's a great suggestion. And I agree with what he said about city not doing enough. And that's why I seconded it. Thank you.
Okay, good, okay. And Councilmember Toms?
Yeah, I just want to thank you. I do think we need to go in this direction and, you know, create a subcommittee. But it's the scope that I'm not sure that we can, the total scope. I mean, there's a scope of improving communication with our citizens. Is that enough of a scope? And implementing the plan that, you know, is developed, is that, you know, broad enough scope that we can go with tonight?
So, yes, I don't have any answer to that. But I'm going to take, I'm going to take the approach that was taken with the beautification committee, right? Where we had a couple of really most interested council members willing to take the time to come together, put together some ideas and then bring them back to council on this matter of having a subcommittee, a communication subcommittee. So some of the things that may have already been mentioned about what its scope would be, we'd hear them, we'd hear them again perhaps, or made more clearly with some more specifics as to the composition of this committee and the duration of this committee, the type of committee that it would be. And yeah, usually the kinds of things that are expected of a committee when it's formed. So that's what I would add to this. Oh, you're unmuted.
Am I recognized?
Yes, please go.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Um, sure, I would happily, and City Manager Murray, I can also send you over the three points I made around the scope. Um, I think some of this is supposed to be worked shop together. So it'll pay for us to, again, workshop together and say, what is the scope? What are the duties and powers? What, what is the membership? Um, the goal here is to be collaborative together. The goal is not for only two councilmembers to feel like this is only, you know, or, you know, me and Mayor Proten to think this is the idea. Um, I actually do want, you know, Mayor Martinez-Rubin and Councilmember Toms and Councilmember Tave, like this is actually supposed to be a subcommittee of our council. Anything that, you know, this subcommittee advises is technically going to come back to this council, um, and to be discussed. Um, you know, in many ways, um, I see this as a working group. Um, I see our subcommittees all as a working group. I, I'm now questioning why I haven't met my subcommittees. I'm on, you know, Councilmember Toms, myself and you are on the, um, uh, the, um, I was going to say mural, but the, I mean, we're on working groups together. Thank you, thank you. And my point is, you know, Mayor, we've been on the ad hoc committee together. I was on the planning commission at the time, you were a councilmember. Those things came back to the council. So again, what I'd be happy to do if necessary, if this ends, I guess, the conversation, is I'm happy to lead the effort to come back to the table, of course, maybe, of course, keeping this motion, creating the subcommittee, we can come back to the table and explain what would be the duties, what would be the powers, uh, who do we recommend for the membership? Um, but we've got to start somewhere with the committee. So right now, we can say the committees, you know, whoever the councilmembers decide to be, whoever this council decides to be, I'm happy to volunteer to be one. Um, and we can come back to this council to say, hey, here's all the work that we've done since then. And guess what? We also have a plan from consultants that say what work is, what work should be done. Um, I also want to acknowledge something that has been said in public comment. Um, I love Sorrel Associates. Sorrel Associates is based in Los Angeles. Um, that is not Pinole, that is not Contra Costa County. So even in their, you know, approaches and methodologies, there's not going to be a center to Pinole. We've got to have somebody or some group center back to, okay, what approach in their methodologies are relevant to the city of Pinole? Um, and maybe this committee could do that. So I mean, there's a lot of opportunity, I think. Um, and I, I, I'm hearing from all of us that we see a need in it. There's some type of like internal pushback still, but I'm seeing that all of us kind of agree for a need here. Um, so again, no hard feelings if we don't support it. I want to support this because I think this is important and hopefully will be a step in the right direction. Um, and that's, yeah, that's my last word on it, at 10:00.
I don't think, I don't somehow, I don't think so, but that's the fight in this. Um, okay, so there is a motion on the floor, there's a second about forming this committee. We've had a little bit of discussion, are the virtual hands, uh, further discussion on this? Councilmember Tave, anything different? No, Council?
I was just going to call a question.
Okay, good, thank you. And, um, so let's do that, Mayor Salimi, anything different than you, that you haven't already said? Otherwise, we're going to go for a vote.
Yeah, I was going to defend the scope of work of the committee.
Okay, and that's what I, let's, let's just, again, we can go on to 1:00 PM, and I don't think we're going to do that, so.
One AM, one AM for 1:00 PM.
Oh, you know, 1:00 AM, 1:00 PM.
No, we can do 1:00 PM.
Already I'm not thinking straight, you don't want that. So I think those, those details about, about the, what the committee would be about would be, would be the, you know, take it away, councilmembers who are willing to be part of it, is what I'm thinking. Um.
Um, yes, Madam Mayor, just, I think you can just leave it broad. The communication, the committee responsibility will be to develop, update and monitor the communication policies.
What about technology?
That include technology.
Okay.
It'll be to develop, update and monitor the communication policy, including technology, that's it, just leave it broad and they can come back with suggestions.
Okay. Okay, thank you for, for offering that.
Does that need to be part of the motion?
I think so, it would be clearer.
Uh, okay. I'll add it to the motion, please.
Okay, so that, uh, Councilmember Murphy, accept that amendment? Yeah, okay.
Good, let's.
Okay, um, Mayor, um, sorry, City, um, City Clerk Yopu, please, take us the roll call. Um, the motion before us is to form a sub, uh, City Technology and Communications Subcommittee, uh, with its charges being to develop and update policy related to those communications.
Develop, monitor, I'm sorry, develop, update and monitor.
Policies related to city technology and communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Toms?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Tave?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez-Rubin?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Do we want to, do you want to assign members right now?
Thank you, thank you, because now we have a shell, now we've got a full disciple who's going to be part of that. Okay, so I will nominate Councilmember Murphy and, uh, Councilmember Tave to be, uh, our two councilmembers on this committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, do I hear a second? Oh, do we need a second? No, you're willing to do this? That's it.
This is City Clerk Yopu, it's probably best if we have the appointment be by minute order, so a, um, yes, a motion would be great.
Thank you. Explain minute order for me, please.
Oh, just an action of the council by motion. It's not, uh, as opposed to, we don't have a resolution before you. We're just going to have a motion with affirmative vote, and that will be enough to, um, to complete the action, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Council, uh, now we go through, through a round of a votes?
Councilmembers Toms?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Tave?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez-Rubin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Hey, thank you all, looking forward to working with you on it.
Yeah, I, I, I look forward to hearing back, mu- many, many things. Thank you. Mayor reporting announcement, okay, I'm trying to make this really quickly. Um, since we last met on September 21st, um, several of us, me included, attended the Cal Cities Annual Conference. There were in particular a few sessions that I, um, was most interested in that I hope will yield, um, some resources coming back to the city. And by resources, I don't necessarily mean monetary, but, uh, either technical assistance or training sometime in the future. Uh, one of the sessions I attended was on human-centered design, which is an approach that creates programs, services and policies tailored to the needs of, um, the community members impacted by them, rather than from the, um, exclusively or solely, uh, from the perspective of City Hall. And Bloomberg Philanthropies was, um, an organization that was mentioned as offering, uh, technical grants to cities to help with ideas related to, um, human-centered design, which is considered an innovative approach. And I'm looking forward to getting more news about that to share with you all. The other, uh, was on creating a governance culture of stability and purpose. And, um, I think over, through this year, we've had various experiences as, from, coming from, from public comments, largely stemming from public comments, where this, where this matter of stability and purpose doesn't necessarily, is not necessarily reflected. And so whatever, um, guidance and tips, um, I can acquire from other cities who experience a similar concern about not having that kind of culture, I am open to, too. So I attended a session on that. And, um, a highlight for me was another, um, municipal data enactment with, um, the controller in Los Angeles presenting that. And although we're talking about, about a large city, nonetheless, uh, many of the lessons learned from those large cities are applicable to small cities, which is where I think we want to, um, somehow, somehow, um, if not duplicate, at least attempt to try to, um, use data to help us with decisions. And so in that session, um, there, there, it underscored, the presenters underscored the importance of using data to support decision-making. Um, the 30th of September, I attended the Mayor's and Supervisor's Conference. Um, during that session, presenter Sarah Denham, who spoke against United Against Hate. And I was pleased that at that time, we were looking forward to having the council here in Pinole agree to the different activities that were eventually presented by staff that are going to help, um, support that campaign as part of the Bay Area. And, um, on the 7th, I attended the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference. Um, All Home was an organization that presented a framework that they called the 124 Framework on Addressing Homelessness, which is, uh, based on a ratio of, of, um, strategies or activities that address, um, interim, in an interim way, in a permanent way, and, and with prevention solutions, this whole matter of homelessness. And I'm hopeful that I will remain in, in touch with Executive Director Ken Kirke to, um, learn a bit more about what might be applicable here in Pinole. Of course, we had a number of different community events, excuse me, um, that I enjoyed greatly now that we have had the opportunity to come out a little bit more, um, to open, open the kinds of activities. Uh, the car show on, uh, the 26th of September, ribbon cutting, uh, at X Fitness in Pinole on the 2nd of October, Oktoberfest, I say Joseph School, of course, National Night Out, shout out. And thank you again to the Pinole Police Department's outreach unit and all volunteers associated with that, and the vendors who came out, and certainly community members who helped make that happen, um, as a very lively, family-oriented event. And I echo, uh, what the PPD noticed was the Halloween theme. If we can carry that through for, um, years, um, into the future, it's probably going to draw a lot more families to come to that, um, than, than we did, uh, we're used to have when we had it in August. Um, on the 14th of October, the WISCAT Board met, and I will defer to Councilmember Toms to report back on that. Sorrel, the consultant that's working with Pinole on crafting the communications engagement plan, spent a little bit of time with me. And, um, hopefully, the comments that I made will, will make it into their, their summary of, um, how to, how to improve, uh, communications throughout town. Um, and, uh, I'm happy to also have been part of the trial run of the Five Mayor's Exchange Liter assessment project that was held on Saturday, where I also had an opportunity to talk to community members and their concerns related to safety. And, um, associated with that is unfortunately, some of the homeless people that we have. I understand our Public Works Manager, as well as our Police Department, are doing as they, as they can, what they can within their role and authority, as, as well, working with the librarians, um, to try to improve, uh, the conditions behind library, which might be, um, which, which has been a spot for some of the homeless people to, to be involved. I'm sorry, not to be involved, but to be there, to be present. And as you all know, it's not only a matter of having people be made invisible, but rather helping them out and addressing, uh, their mo- a, a multitude of conditions that they find themselves in that has led them to homelessness. And I think members of the public understand that. Uh, what is a little bit challenging, or maybe a lot challenging, is that we're, we're also, um, addressing or wanting to pinpoint whatever behaviors there might be that pose threats to the public, uh, because those, uh, tennis courts, the library and the area around there are spots in Pinole that are used, um, pretty extensively, if not regularly, through the week and every weekend. So we'll, uh, continue to see, uh, more from, from our staff about what is working well that can help us all around in, um, having that part of Pinole feel, feel safer for all involved. Thank you for listening, and a reminder to all, uh, continue practicing, uh, public health guidelines to minimize your exposure to COVID. Mask up, maintain social distance, and when, uh, when possible, um, vaccinate to minimize, um, minimize acquiring the virus and its variants. So, um, I will move on to mayor and council appointments. We don't have any this evening. I'll turn to council for committee reports and communications, starting with Mayor Proten Salimi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, nothing to report.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Murphy?
Yep, just two things. Um, first and foremost, I wanted to inform the public that next Monday, October 25th, at 5:00 PM, um, the Countywide Sustainability Commission is going through their own, well, going through a countywide process to review the, the countywide climate action plan. So lots happening around climate action, obviously. Um, so if, um, I think there's someone who wanted some ideas about what a climate action plan looks like, that would be a great opportunity to attend and learn a little bit more about what the county is doing and how that could either feed into Pinole or Pinole can lead efforts in a different way. Um, more information is available on the Envision Contra Costa 2040 website, which is envisioncontracostatwentyforty.org. And again, that's the Sustainability Commission meeting next Monday, October 25th, at 5:00 PM. Um, and it's available to everyone because it's via Zoom, so you are more than welcome to join. Um, and to that same, well, close to, but not similar, uh, close to, but similar, um, there's also the Contra Costa County redistricting process going on. Um, this can be quite confusing because we have a countywide redistricting process where our supervisor seats are arranged, and then there's a state process that does not run similar to that. Those are completely two different processes. Um, and what that means is there's a bunch of community workshops that you as residents have to be aware of. Um, namely, the Contra Costa County redistricting process is about our supervisor seats. So right now, they've released draft maps. Um, and if you look at all of those draft maps, it looks like Pinole is now going to be under one district. That is not certain because these are draft maps, but it looks like Pinole is likely going to be under District 1. So if you're someone like me who lives in District 5, because Pinole is represented by two districts, there are going to be changes next year to our representation. Um, and if you don't agree to that, now would be the time for you to make your voice heard to the county redistricting, um, uh, at the county redistricting workshops. That information is at cocoredistrictingboard. So you can go through the county website to go to that, or you can go straight to cocoredistrictingboard. Um, and again, that's just the countywide district process for supervisor maps. If you want to learn about the state, there's an entire different website that you have to go to. Honestly, your best friend can be Google and just Googling the two different processes because you don't want to confuse yourself by getting involved at one meeting when you want to go to the other. So just wanted to amplify those opportunities for the public, but that's all for now, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tave?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, um, that we had our Saturday ARPA Fun session in October, in October. Um, and it went well, I think we're looking for more participation, uh, in November, so just encouraging everybody to spread the word. I think we're going to go ahead and communicate, uh, out another, another mail or some form to, to the public. Um, Cal Cities was great. Uh, I was able to attend one, one session, uh, that I, I wanted to mention about, uh, projections and its economic projections. It was Dr. Peter Rupert who was, um, presenting. I think, uh, Councilmember Toms was in there, um, and just looking at the economic outlook. And there were, there were a lot of comparisons as to the, and we talked a little bit about it on Saturday, as to the debt, national debt that's being acquired, uh, going through COVID. So it just as a local agency, I, I think we got to be cautious as to how we're spending and making sure that we're, we're, I don't want to say that we're conservative in our spending, but very strategic is how we, how we do things moving forward. Um, and I just wanted to thank everybody who participated on Saturday. Thank you, everyone, for coming out to the car show and coming out to a National Night Out. I, I know that with COVID and everything starting to loosen up, just be mindful of your surroundings and your personal safety. Uh, masks are always great, six feet are always great. Um, but as we start to open up, just be cognizant of, of where we are. And, and make sure, I know we have a high vaccination rate, but, but I want to make sure that everyone's aware, you, you got to get vaccinated. It's important, um, moving forward, so, um, I just wanted to leave everybody with that. Uh, if you haven't been vaccinated, uh, you know, really give it a consideration because we're moving into a, a realm of, you know, once, once the masks are off and everyone's vaccinated, uh, we're going to be moving more towards, um, you know, living with COVID. And, and that's, that's, uh, a, another hill, another monument, it'll come down the line. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, you know, the vaccination is extremely important, make sure you get it, so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Toms?
Sure, um, I, I wanted to mention, uh, my thanks for all of the event organizers, um, you know, whether it was National Night Out or the Car Show. Um, and also, I did attend, um, the Bike the Bridges, recep-, you know, the, the, um, not the bicycle riding part, but the part in Martinez. And Pinole was well represented there from, volunteers from our law enforcement. So, um, a big shout out to them because, um, we look good to the rest of the community when we've got our volunteers out there. Um, also, I wanted to highlight, um, a couple of the sessions from Cal Cities. Um, also, I wanted to highlight, um, a couple of the sessions from Cal Cities, um, conference. One was on post-COVID retail trends. You know, we've seen a lot of, um, online, um, retail transactions, but, um, you know, I think the big, uh, takeaway from this is that there, there's still some in-person retail, um, that is going to take place. Um, you know, even post-COVID, so that, that was a good thing to hear. The other one that, uh, really is highlighted is a, um, it was a, a session on changing the wildfire prevention paradigm. And the, um, uh, presenters were just across the bay in Marin County, and that's, um, uh, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and a few of the members, um, of that authority. And they talked about, um, you know, getting the JPA together and how they did that and how it's funded and some of the things that they have, um, done. So I had a good conversation, um, with a couple of them afterwards. And, um, they've offered to be resources as, um, you know, West County looks to go in that direction. The last, um, thing I wanted to mention is that the Board of Supervisors received a report last week on, um, Measure X recommendations. And, um, I was a little bit disheartened that, you know, even though, um, you know, the, the fire chiefs in the county presented a proposal, and some of the members of that committee sort of, um, broke off pieces of that proposal and scored those higher, and that being East County Fire. And, um, I provided public comment when that was initially done. And, um, I, I would just ask our Pinole residents and our council members to communicate to the Board of Supervisors, uh, the importance of, um, of going forward with the, uh, fire chief's proposal and not breaking off and segmenting pieces of it. It is something that is, um, uh, the Board of Supervisors is going to consider this item on November 2nd, and we don't have time to put it on our agenda to, um, ask for another letter, um, to go forward. So I would suggest that our council members and our members of the public take a copy of the letter that was submitted to the committee and then create your own letter that goes to the Board of Supervisors. I plan on doing that, and, um, and then I will also have another follow-up item on future agenda items.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Toms.
Thank you. So, uh, with three minutes remaining, I'd like to request consensus to extend this meeting to 11:15, please. We may not need that much time, but we have a couple of other items.
So moved.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. Any objections? Thank you. Okay. Um, all right then. I think we covered everyone with their committee reports and communications. Now on to item 12D, and that's council request for future agenda items. I see a virtual hand. Councilmember Murphy?
Um, yes, I'm so sorry, but Councilmember Toms just made a really, really important point, and I think I wanted to make sure that we hone in on that. Um, thank you, Councilmember Toms. I was just going to ask the city manager if we can put our letter, given that we're not having council meeting by that point, can we put the letter that we, um, drafted on the, like, as a roll-down on the city website? And just say, like, take action or watch, something that amplifies that letter and that messaging, I think. I mean, I don't know what else to do right now, so that just made me think, like, that's a way for folks on residents to take action. Uh, maybe with a call to action to say, like, you've, you know, send this message to the, you know, board, something to that would matter. I'm happy to help draft the language after the council meeting, but I just wanted to say that. And Councilmember Toms, thank you for your advocacy, um, there. I really think that was important. Um, I only have one agenda item that I'd like to add to our agenda. Um, and I know we haven't met in a while, but I did want to make sure that this came up because I thought this was pretty important. Um, essentially, the council had, at this point, has not updated our... So let me take a step back. Um, every year, we go through the process where we do our reorganization meeting. We update, um, our procedures, et cetera. Um, one of the things that I noticed is that the city's Code of Ethics have not been updated or adopted since February of 2007. Um, it also applies only to our city council, our boards, our commissions, and our city staff, but it does not apply to our city treasurer. Um, since we've last met, unfortunately, we've had some incidents where our city treasurer has kind of, uh, done questionable actions. And I think it just will be really important for us to, um, update that Code of Ethics, um, to adopt a new resolution, um, and locate that 2007 to make it 2021. Um, and furthermore, it also lacks, really lacks any teeth, right, around disciplinary actions or sanctions imposed by violations of that Code of Ethics. And so my hope is, and my ask to council, is that we, uh, have an agenda item to amend and update the city Code of Ethics. Um, and direct staff to present to the city council an option to add the Code of Ethics to the Pinole Municipal Code as well.
I'd be interested in reviewing the Code of Ethics. I don't know, um, city attorney cashier, whether that other piece of it, um, is something doable, the Code of Ethics in an ordinance and how those relate. But, um, maybe that's part of what would be presented to us.
Yeah, the, the, the current Code of Ethics is in the form of a resolution that was adopted by the city council in 2007. Um, so it kind of lives in that resolution. There are some municipalities throughout the state that, that have their Code of Ethics codified in the municipal code, so there are, um, examples of that available. Um, we could certainly, if, if it's the will of the council, we can present options to the council of, on how to, um, update the existing Code of Ethics and, and also, um, codify it in the municipal code, if that's the, the interest.
Okay. Thank you. Do, does there consensus on this? Any objections? Then we have at least three people?
Yeah.
A virtual hand, four? Okay. Thank you. You got it? Anything else? Councilmember Murphy?
Oh, nothing for me. No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Toms, you see your hand?
Yes, um, as far as a continuation on my previous, um, item is that for future agenda item, I would like to have a place on the agenda where we can have a verbal report, um, on the Measure X. Uh, we're not going to be able to have a written report because, um, it, it's, the report would come from, uh, one of us, some of us, um, many of us participating in the Board of Supervisors meeting regarding Measure X. If by chance, there is a continuation of the discussion, if it's on the agenda, it's my understanding that we can then also direct staff to draft a letter from us to go to the board. Um, so, um, just a, um, you know, an update on Measure X, and it would be based on what has happened earlier that afternoon.
Uh, please help me out. An update from whom? Who would make it?
Um, I'm not sure if the fire chief would be able to make it, if he's going to be monitoring that, um, meeting. Um, I'll be probably monitoring. I think if the fire chief is, is tied up, um, he will, um, you know, he'll have some others that will have, uh, been monitoring the meeting. I'll try to monitor it as well.
Councilmember Toms, um, if I could just add, perhaps you and I can collaborate on that, uh, offline, and I can give you a call in the next day or two about that.
Okay.
Okay. And thank you again so much.
Sure.
Okay, so the request for an agenda item is to have a report back on the outcomes and, or the status of Measure X.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Any, uh, consensus on that or any objections to it? By a show of hands, do I have consensus? Okay. Thank you. All right. That it?
Um, just one follow-up. Um, uh, Councilmember Murphy mentioned, you know, putting something on the, the website. I'm wondering if in the weekly, uh, administrative report, if we can have the emails to all the board members and the clerk of the board, and maybe even a sample of the letter that we sent as, you know, an attachment. That might assist, uh, some of our citizens to, uh, send their own communications.
Okay. Thanks for the suggestion. Um, all right, Councilmember Tave?
Uh, no, I don't.
Thank you. And I have one item, and that is, um, a follow-up to an email request that I received. Um, District Attorney Betten would like to make a presentation to update, um, council on, on her activities. So the agenda item is to have District Attorney Betten present to us. And I think between now and that date, um, if we have some specific questions for her, then we would want her to know what those questions are in advance for presentation. But as far as I know, her request was to update us on what the DA's office is, is doing.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, I think we're, we went through, um, all of our agenda item requests. Uh, city manager, anything to report to us?
I'd just very briefly, um, echo the sentiments regarding, the, the council has shared regarding all the community events. I feel like it's, um, been a, a reopening and kind of a rebirth and renaissance that we've all been able to get out, enjoy such, uh, running into one another and having a good time. So, uh, yeah, I just wanted to, um, appreciate the staff that have worked on that and as well, the community that have come out to, to enjoy and, and create community. Um, we are going to have a number of, um, upcoming events and initiatives that the community is invited to weigh in on. So the community will be, uh, receiving a mailer regarding the second, um, special council meeting that's a workshop for decision-making on how the, um, Federal American Rescue Plan Act funds should be expended. So look for a mailer in your mailbox about that. Uh, residents will also be receiving a mailer, um, asking for their participation in the development of something called a local road safety plan. So we have hired some consultants who will be doing an assessment of, um, the safety issues throughout the community related to traffic pedestrians, uh, bicycles. And they're looking for community members to provide their thoughts about where the, the areas of concern are. So we'll be sending a postcard to all residents, letting them know how they can provide their input to that. So, um, a couple of calls for community involvement and suggestions that I'm hoping that, um, community members are gonna, um, take up. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you. If those requests can also appear on the scroll, uh, if they're not already, on VHS TV? Thank you. Okay, city attorney, have a report from you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report at this time. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we've come to the end of our meeting, and I appreciate all, um, input that was provided, the discussions that we had, the reports from staff, um, the patience that we all have had with each other, um, the sense of humor. Here we are, uh, at 11:07, so thank you again. I hereby adjourn this regular city council meeting to the one on November 2nd in remembrance of Amber Schwartz. Stay safe, everyone. Until next time.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Night, everyone.